Three, two, one.
Welcome to the May 5th, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Veneeth Imavati. I will be confirming that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zorko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar, as posted on the agenda and Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. We will not begin with the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will move into Select Board announcements. The annual Town Meeting is set for May 13th, 2025, in the Long Meadow High School gym. For additional information and resources and to view the annual Town Meeting warrant, please visit longmeadowma.gov/TownMeeting. The preliminary election is set for tomorrow, Tuesday, May 6th, to narrow down the list of Select Board candidates from five to four, to be featured on the June 3rd Annual Town Election Ballot. For a list of candidates and additional information and resources, please visit longmeadowma.gov/elections. A full listing of candidates for other elected positions on the June annual election will can also be viewed on this page. MassDOT is holding a 25% design public hearing for Long Meadow Street Route 5 Phase 1 work on Thursday, May 8th, at 6:30 at the Greenwood Center at 231 Maple Road. The project area is from Converse Street to Crescent Road, including modification of signalized intersections and improvements at Edgewood Avenue, Bliss Road, and Bernie Road. The roadway improvements include pavement mill and overlay, with minor full-depth widening, curbing, pavement markings, signage, roadside restoration, and vegetation clearing. More info can be found at mass.gov/ highway/division/events, or to view a recording of the presentation if you are unable to attend the meeting. Long Meadow's annual shredding event will be held on Saturday, June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Long Meadow High School Student Parking Lot. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And with the conclusion of announcements, we will now move into resident comments. Does anyone here make a resident comment? Is there anyone online?
Sorry about being muted for anyone on the Zoom. We are good to go with audio now.
Yeah, all that for nothing.
Start over.
Good?
Yep. No one on the Zoom for resident comment.
Great, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. Gateway Fiber Correspondence is in the agenda for this evening. It is a significant private fiber company with equity from a major infrastructure fund and has existing operations in Massachusetts. The letter is dated March 27th. It was likely sent by regular mail and missed the April 7th Select Board meeting. But the attachments to that letter need to be posted. Gateway signed poll agreements with EverSource and Verizon in June of 2023 and is likely over a year ahead of Long Meadow Fiber. What did people in this room know? And when did they know it? What correspondence was there? And were there any meetings or calls with Gateway? Why has there been no discussion of Gateway for possibly a year and nothing in published Select Board or Town Management comments? If anyone in this room knew of Gateway and its early lead in financial investment, they likely had a fiduciary responsibility to the Select Board and citizens to disclose it, especially before voting for and funding the $500,000 for the Fiber Spring contract. Select Board should discuss this issue tonight, and the Select Board and citizens need a full timeline and summary of discussions and status with Gateway. Three major DPW issues, did you know? On March 28th, there was a major water pressure drop in town, and the level of water in the storage tank dropped substantially. I've confirmed this with the DPW director. The issue was like, there was no fires or broken water pipes. The issue was likely an issue with the telemetry equipment, which was, as you know, was a major issue last year. What happened? Is this an issue to be addressed? Greenwood Pool, in February, there were two significant incidents of major broken PVC piping in the filter area and large losses of water. I witnessed one of those. Arment Trucking and the DPW responded to the one I saw. Was the pool properly winterized? Springfield Water and Sewer has alerted its wholesale customers. There is a risk of water curtailment this summer due to construction of the new water treatment plant. Long Meadow DPW is aware of this. Springfield, Ludlow, and one other municipality have held planning meetings with their emergency management groups. Has Long Meadow done this? Should have had a previously suggested water bill insert this month regarding proper irrigation practices. Did you know of these three major issues? They are not in the DPW monthly activity reports. Ask about them tonight. I look forward to the water and sewer rate discussion. It probably won't get decided tonight, so look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I kept it within one second. That was good.
Hello, my name is Jim Moran, and I live at 48 Avondale Road. In the package for tonight's meeting, I found a letter from Gateway Fiber, addressed to the Long Meadow Select Board. That was a response to an email of February 7th from our Town Manager. This letter is pretty interesting, given the fact that it shed light on Gateway Fiber's active interest in building a fiber network in Long Meadow. Gateway Fiber is a national company with numerous completed projects and a solid track record. In this response letter, they were asking for a public hearing about their proposed project. From the content of the letter and its attachments, which I've seen, it seems that Gateway Fiber has already spent considerable energy and money toward the goal of building a fiber network in Long Meadow. Interestingly enough, I checked the Fiber Task Force final report issued in June of 2024, and I could not find any mention of Gateway Fiber and their capabilities, even though I've been told that there was at least one meeting between the two groups. Gateway Fiber is currently building a fiber network in the city of Northampton and has already spent $3 million on the project as of November 2024. Their internet pricing structure for Northampton residents is pretty similar to what Long Meadow Fiber is proposing. They're proposing one gig, or they've announced one gig up and down symmetrical speeds for $90 a month with up to two gig symmetric speeds. This fiber network will be owned by Gateway Fiber and not by the city of Northampton. Bottom line, Northampton residents will not be risking any taxpayer dollars in this venture, but will be receiving high-speed internet at competitive pricing. Got a couple of questions for the Select Board. It seems to me that having two capable private sector companies, Comcast and Gateway Fiber, competing for Long Meadow customers and investing their capital and not Long Meadow's taxpayer money would be the ideal approach. So the question is, why was this approach not taken? Why haven't some members of the Select Board not heard of Gateway Fiber's latest interest in Long Meadow? We have a Town Meeting next Tuesday. We're looking to change our charter, our Town Charter, to enable the Select Board to act as a municipal light board and be able to approve expenditures for the creation of our own fiber network. I think the Town Meeting members should say no next week to Article 28, which would pause the Long Meadow Fiber project in order for us to rethink our strategy. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? No? Okay, great. We'll move into Select Board comments. Anyone have a Select Board comment they'd like to make? Andrew?
Lynn is going to touch on this in her comments, but I just wanted to recognize and say that I'm very glad that we finally have a contract for the consultative evaluation of our empty town buildings, including the Town Hall, the Community House, and the Old Town Hall, which is this tiny building on Long Meadow Street across from the CBS. These buildings have been empty, and I've honestly been chomping at the bit to try to help start a community-wide conversation about what we should do about them. At this point, I think it's not too early for people to start thinking about what they'd like to see here. We're lucky we have a surplus of buildings in town. You know, we have more than we need. We have plenty of meeting spaces. We have plenty of office space. We don't need another auditorium, especially with the middle school coming and having a large one. And my priorities, and I think we probably all share this, is that these buildings are preserved and utilized. Right now, they are empty. They cost a lot to maintain. They entail liabilities. And in an ideal world, they would be vibrant community spaces that are avidly used town buildings or serve other functions that generate income for our town, like property taxes or rent. It's helpful, especially for historically-minded people like me, that to know that the Community House and the Town Hall are in the historic district, so they are protected, like the exterior of them can't change essentially. And the next question, of course, would be, what is the cost of modernizing them? Which I'm confident will be a lot. You know, based on my experience renovating the Brewer Young Mansion, I'm pretty sure the consultant's going to say, we're going to recommend completely redoing the HVAC, the electricity, the plumbing in these buildings, make them ADA compliant, install elevators. And like all projects, the cost of this will be much higher if the town undertakes it in comparison to, for example, a private developer, due to, of course, prevailing wages and other municipal requirements. I think it'd be wonderful if we could determine a good use for these buildings that justifies the town's cost of rehabilitation. But if a good town use is not apparent, I think we could also consider private development, which would turn these buildings from a liability into an asset. Because then the town would benefit from the sale of the property, substantial annual property taxes, and we would forego the town onus on the town to modernize and maintain them. If we felt it was really important that the town controlled them, the town could modernize it, but then rent it out essentially and get income that way. And I think there is a great demand for professional offices in town or coworking spaces. These, I think, are the sort of zoning changes that I think would be the most stable over decades. And it's also possible that each building could have a different outcome. I personally would love to see the Community House remain town-owned if we could just find a good use for it. But perhaps the Town Hall could become professional offices and generate property taxes. This town conversation should be wide-ranging and consider all ideas. I've even considered, like, the possibility of the Community House becoming a recreation center with an indoor basketball court, for example. Like, we should consider everything. I also want to ask the Historical Commission to, like, consider this from historical implications, although again, and see if they have other ideas. But again, I think we don't need to worry about the historical properties exteriorly being changed because those are protected. So anyway, I expect this report will hopefully be available in a month or two, and I wanted to highlight this important issue for people and get people thinking about it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, then we can move on to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you. Regarding the Long Range Plan, we announced earlier this year that the Long Range Plan earned a statewide award for its climate resilient Long Range Plan. Adding to that, I'm pleased to report that the Long Meadow Plan was honored with the 2025 Vernon Dean's Honor Award for Outstanding Small Town or Rural Plan, Small Jurisdiction from the Small Town and Rural Planning Division of the American Planning Association, further cementing the plan's reputation as a model for small-town planning. This was a national award. The award was presented at the National Planning Conference on March 31st at the Colorado Convention Center in Denver. And while we were unable to have Long Meadow officials attend the award ceremony, Judy Barrett from the planning group, who had assisted us in preparing and updating Long Meadow's plan, was present and accepted the award on our behalf. As was mentioned in Select Board comment, a contract was signed with Fussin' O'Neill for $95,800 to assess the general building improvement needs of Town Hall, Community House, and Old Town Hall to quantify capital improvement needs, code upgrades, and ADA access improvements. A line painting contract was signed with pro-finished lines for $40,687 for line painting work to be completed by June 1st. There's a map linked in my report that shows the sections of town that will be painted. It is most of town. And Long Meadow Street L Project Water Line Replacement Night Work is about to start next Monday night, the May 12th. This is at the intersection of Converse and Laurel as part of the water line replacement project. Overnight work by the town's contractor, Ludlow Construction, will take place between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. and is expected to last for one week, weather permitting. Converse Street detour through traffic will be maintained in the westbound direction on Converse Street. Eastbound will be detoured to Bliss Road. The typical work zone on Converse Street will utilize a one-lane road alternating traffic detail. Night work at the intersection of Long Meadow Street and Forest Glen is tentatively scheduled for June 2nd. Detour information will be available as we get closer to that date. We'll again use electronic signboards to notify the public and social media and the Town Website. In my report is a memo from Fussin' O'Neill reporting on the night work operations. EverSource is beginning work on Maple Road with their contractor, NPL Construction. This is to improve the natural gas distribution system for Maple Road and several surrounding streets. Work started April 21st and is going to continue through June. It's going to take place on Maple Road, Hazardville, Leetwood, and Fairview Road. Construction generally takes place Monday through Friday, sometimes on Saturdays, from 7:00 to 4:30. It's all weather-dependent. And a map with the project areas available on the Town Website. An update about Long Meadow Police Department. An alert resident and diligent police work by LPD Officers Rowley and Martin thwarted a home break-in that resulted in an arrest of an individual who had two outstanding warrants. Chief Stock stated in his Facebook post commenting, commending their work, that the incident highlighted the importance of both excellent police work and community vigilance. And an update on Long Meadow Fire. Kudos to the fire department for their work rescuing two baby bald eagles who fell out of their nest when high winds blew the nest down at the Fanny Stebbins Wildlife Refuge. With the assistance of Tom Riccardi of the Mass Birds of Prey Rehab Center in Conway, the birds are going to be cared for until they can be released back into the wild. An update on a DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, grant. The Tree Warden submitted a grant application to DCR for a project entitled Establishing Tree Fellow in Long Meadow and Training Procurement. This grant was approved. The application was submitted through DCR's Urban and Forestry, Urban and Community Forestry Challenge Grant, and was awarded in the amount of $5,691.04. Two more updates. Parks and Rec Department, I want to just draw your attention to three recent announcements by the Park and Rec Department. Parks and Rec has upgraded their registration system. They're now using MyRec. It's requiring families to re-register, but it is a much more robust platform that's easier to use, both for town staff and for residents. You can find more information on lrpd.net. Summer program registrations now open. That includes traditional day camps and specialty camps. Pool passes for Reynolds and Greenwood Pool are available, and both pools are planned to open for the season on June 14th and will be open seven days a week until the end of August. And the Veterans Services Department has launched a newsletter. This is going to be released quarterly, and it features general announcements, resources, commendations, and upcoming program events for veterans. There's also a section for subscribers to give feedback or suggestions for upcoming newsletters. And you can view the previous editions of the quarterly newsletter on the Veterans Services page on longmeadowma.gov. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Lynn. Any questions, comments for Lynn? Josh?
So I don't know who did it, but I want to thank the town for changing the single of the dash line on Long Meadow Street to double yellow. The first time I pulled out of my street and somebody drove around me, it scared the hell out of me. I see weird things happen occasionally, so I'm glad. That seems like a good safety thing to do. And then just an overarching question on this. Are pothole crews getting ahead of the line painting crews? I don't want us painting over somewhere we're going to have to patch.
To the extent possible, yes.
There's a different question. Put it within there.
Anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Lynn. And so I know we have the water study next, but I thought that we have a pretty long meeting ahead of us, and we've got our folks from the Recycling Commission here. So if it was okay, I thought that it might be appropriate for us to move that item up the agenda so we can take care of that first before, you know, we kind of get into the rest of our meeting. So I will move to place the recycling totter size discussion and vote to be the next item on our agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. So we'll go ahead and get into that. So folks that are here to present on that, if you can come up and sit in front of a microphone. And I think that, so we've got a, and I'll kind of just start talking here while you guys are getting settled in. But we have a couple of memos attached to the agenda. One is from DPW, one is from the Recycling Commission. And I think that we kind of have come to some meeting of the minds here where we are going to try to roll out a system here where, beginning possibly tomorrow, we will give folks the option of indicating to the town what size cart that they would like. But I think for the discussion we're having tonight, the biggest question is, what is going to be the default size for these carts? In case that folks, you know, don't go in and select what cart size they want. So just kind of one, there's a lot going on here with this. I just kind of wanted to, like, put that up front as that, as, you know, what the focus of our discussion is going to be. But I'll turn it over to you, Lisa, if you want to kind of talk first.
All right, so I'll start with just a little bit of a background. The town signed a five-year contract with Waste Management to do curbside trash and recycling as fully automated. At fall meeting, we voted, voters approved funding to purchase new recycling carts to facilitate this process. The town has also been awarded a grant with the Recycling Partnership, which will be $15 per household for carts and $1 for educational material, which will total around $88,000. At this time, we're trying to decide what size carts so that we can do an order and distribute to the households. So we've automated recycling is saving the town money in the hauling contract. The contract will be safer and more efficient for the process of the haulers. Research shows that currently there are only two other towns in the state of Massachusetts who run fully automated recycling and dual-streams programs. So by staying dual-stream, the town will continue to reap the benefits of the favorable recycling markets compared to those towns that have gone single-stream. So to discuss the cart sizing, you've probably read the memos. You'll see that the Recycle Commission and the DPW have put a great deal of time looking for the best option to serve the residents, and ultimately it's been very difficult to come up with a conclusion that is agreed upon by all. In the last quarter water bill, the town put a link to a survey, which received 1,377 responses. Residents were asked what size they felt best fit their needs for cardboard containers and if they would prefer one or two carts. 68% wanted 95 gallons for cardboard. 47% wanted 96 gallons or larger for containers, and 32% wanted the 64 gallon. And overwhelmingly, 91% decided that they would prefer to have the two carts versus use one and swap between the two, alternating. The Recycle Commission and DPW have been meeting with our hauler Waste Management to get their feedback. The route drivers came in for lunch one day, and they expressed that cardboard is a problem in town. Routes often take an extra four hours comparative to the containers weeks due to the volume of how much cardboard is in town. They suggested that cardboard carts should be the 96 gallon to offer the most space available. Any smaller, they had concerns that when it tipped, the cardboard would be too crammed in and would not fall out because it has to fall via gravity. With this said, we also talked to our recycle partnership, who's giving us the grant. They said to, you know, listen to your hauler because they see you year-round to how much cardboard and containers are out there. And they said they sort of err on the side of larger than smaller. So we've had the sample carts at the DPW for residents. A lot of them come in for the recycle sticker pass, and they look at them, some give feedback that they can't wait for a bigger one. Some give feedback they don't know where they're going to put it. Certainly, size of families changes how much recycling each household has. At this time, the DPW is recommending the 96 gallon for cardboard and the 64 for containers. We recommend that residents use the two carts and not offer the option to switch between, you know, using just one so that the two carts can have lid colors and, you know, one color be cardboard, one color be container. She'll look out at the street, you know, everyone has the right cart out with the right stuff inside. After the carts are delivered, the town, we think, should then survey, see how people like the sizes, and then determine if we should offer, you know, switches or things like that. We have a July 1st start date with this new contract. Carts do take six to eight weeks to manufacture, and then it will take two weeks to distribute. So the town, if we want to be on time, really should be placing the order like now.
Great, thank you. And I'll turn it over to the Recycling Commission, if you all want to talk about your memo or...
Sure.
Yeah.
Much of what Lisa offered is, we agree with in terms of, in terms of the budgeting and the design of the program. Where we have a difference of opinion is the size of the carts. The survey that went out initially, we are concerned that most of the people that responded to the survey, yes, they want a bigger one, but they probably didn't know how large that 95-gallon bin was. Many of the people that took a look at it said, far too big, I don't know where I'll put it. We had some meetings with people at the Adult Center, and to a person, pretty much, they said they'd have no room for it. They're having trouble, many of them, handling the trash carts that we have now, which is about a third of the size of the 97-gallon barrel. So we felt that's just too big. Our recommendation is 48 gallons for the bottles and cans, 67 gallons for the paper and cardboard. We also did a survey for quite a few weeks, driving around town in each pickup zone to see what people were throwing out, what were their requirements. The great majority of households we saw, the 48-gallon would more than fit their needs for bottles and cans. The 67-gallons would more than fit their needs for paper and cardboard. Not everybody. There was a good 10%, 20% that certainly needed larger. What our proposal says is, let's do a, let's give...
Default.
Let's give the default, the 48 and 67 gallons as a default to everybody. If you want something different, if a household wants something different, trade up or trade down, or on either or both, we have a period, it's a brief period, it'll be a week, to respond and give their choice, which they want bigger or smaller. And we'll meet those needs. We'll meet those requests. This way, any changes, any changes that need to be made are done before the order, which will save us money. We'll order, what we should be doing is order more precisely to what each resident wants. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Anything to add?
The only thing I would suggest is that, Claire, why don't you just?
I think I'll capture it.
Is that we feel that the opt-out, which is what we're going to call it, is a fair and reasonable way to get a vision of what people really want, what they need, and doing that up front, I think, will save the town from ordering a lot of extra containers that they might not need to try to accommodate people's requests at the back end instead of the front end. And we spoke to the vendor, and the vendor was agreeable to letting us put that, give him that information in advance, programming that. And when he's doing the rollout, he can give those distinct barrels to the right home. So we feel it's a reasonable thing. It can be done. It's going to be a great program. We want everybody to use the carts and enjoy the carts and not have to fight over them or be unhappy with the size that they have. I've been doing workshops, I've been doing driving around, and maybe it's just the people I run into, but overwhelmingly, the 95-gallon is overwhelming to certain groups of residents in the town. Questions, comments?
So yeah, I agree that I think that if giving people the option at the outset to select what type of, or what size cart they would want would be preferable. But I don't think that's what I heard from you guys. But I don't think that's what I heard from your guys' report. So is there an issue with that? Like DPW have an issue with that or a concern with that?
So if we ordered this week and picked like the default size for everyone, we'll make it on time for July 1st. If we don't order this week, we run into, we're probably not making it for July 1st. So Waste Management could renegotiate, we have to pay more for the hauling while we don't have the carts out.
We don't know that.
They could though. As for ordering now, I do see there could be issues of I didn't get my order in. I got my order and now that I see it, it's not what I want. So it would create that there's still going to be a lot of want us to switch versus everyone try out this size and then we get the feedback.
I think we also have that different information than you guys have depending on the demographic that's been discussed. So I think that's the other conflict. We had the public survey, which said they wanted the larger sizes. So, yeah, not to take away from the work they've done, it's just the information we've gotten.
And then so, in the kind of the system that you all are proposing, so people get the carts and then they can swap them out after receiving them? And so how would that, how would that work?
So we could either decide to order in front when we get the delivery, an X amount of swappable containers. Or we could wait and then once we get the feedback from the survey, then get a feel for how many people wanted a different size and see if it was worth doing a purchase. Lot of what, the carts are pretty much all around the same price, you know, $5 difference depending on the size. It's more the freight of if you fill a truck, it's $2,000. If you don't fill a truck, it's still $2,000. So if you're ordering around 600, it's most beneficial. If you're ordering 100, you're paying way more per cart.
Okay, and then so, and just to clarify, your concern with doing on the front end, it's obviously people, when they actually get it, not being happy with their decision maybe or what they were given. And also maybe just not having enough time right here to give people.
Yep.
Okay, alright, thank you. Josh?
What was the timing on the survey? When was that?
It went out at the last water bill, which would have been three months ago. And they had about a month of responses came through.
I could probably speak for a decent amount of people in town. I did the survey, I said, yeah, I want the biggest one. Then I went and looked at it, said, oh my God, that is massive.
Overall, both, both containers and paper, everyone said the largest. And so we don't actually suggest it for the containers.
I know, I think we talked about it before meeting once, that we, those of us who went in were just shocked by how big it is. It's like half of a car going to the garage, it's really big. So I certainly understand why we want the biggest for paper, it makes sense logistics-wise. I'm worried that people start getting those dropped off and just lose their minds. And I, what I really don't want us to do is have to go back and order a lot more. It's going to cost money and I don't think the town should pay for that. I would think if people aren't happy with it, we should charge them for it. But it's also really wasteful. And where do we, where do we put all these carts? What do we do with them? Are they recyclable themselves? So really, this timing stinks. I mean, there's no way, no way to sugarcoat it. But I do, I really think, and Perozos have gone to see them, if you see the biggest one, I think it is just too big for paper. I would like the biggest that would fit through, and I put it in my shed, I should measure. But I know 96 won't fit, it's this wide. So I think it would be a mistake to default to the biggest.
Thank you. Andrew? Oh, you want to go?
No, go ahead.
First of all, thank you so much to all of you for doing this. And I know specifically the Recycling Committee has put a great deal of effort into this. I clearly see, I think we all do, both sides in the sense that we have a metric, a survey that has a number. But I definitely think there's adequate like concern that really people didn't know exactly what they were getting into. I think, my feeling is that your plan would be great and could be great, except this timing issue is being a bit of an issue. So I guess we need to know more about how, let's say we gave it a week. How are you planning to get people's input? Like let's say we did, the default is the 48 and 67, 67 for cardboard. And we're hoping maybe that's great for 85% of the people. But not, it's wonderful to give people choice, I think that's great. How are you going to get the word out? And could you do it by Friday, basically? And so that this week we can make an order and then maybe have a chance? Because two months from now already puts us past, as Lisa noted, July 1st.
Yeah, I think before we panic about the deadline, which we agree, July 1st is our commitment, is we should check with Waste Management to see if we could have a week or two beyond that.
You mean is possible they could give it to us faster?
They're not going to have the new trucks.
They're not even going to, they're not going to have the new trucks that they promised us.
I see, so there is a chance that we could mutually agree to postpone.
I think it's, I think it's worth a question, that's all I'm suggesting.
Sure.
Because we didn't think, Toter, the company we're buying them from, would do what they're going to do. When we called them, they said, sure, I could program them and you don't have to, it's not going to be a big deal, we can deliver them.
So can you talk about how you would get feedback for the people who don't want the default?
No, yes, I think she's, this has created a
Created a Google form.
Okay.
And basically, we would ask for the town's help to distribute it. So we would like it to go through like a robo-call on all the social media. We'll put it on our social media and spread the word that way. I think we would be able to capture a lot, especially through a robo-call. And the Google form is anybody can take it, you don't need a Google account to do it. And I mean
Tell them how it populates.
And if, so all the information populates into an Excel spreadsheet. So then we can decipher how many carts. And I'm asking in the Google form for addresses. So we know if people do, you know, like if two people from the household will take the task, we'll know how to eliminate that. And we'll know who's been asking. And the thing about the Google form is that this is an opt-out option. If you're okay with the default, you'll say, yes, I'm okay with it. And then that is counted and you don't need to go through the question. So basically, we'll know how many wants the default and how many wants different options.
And we don't need, we don't need to input the addresses right away. What we need is the numbers for the order. So we can figure out that later on. So the key things, I think, she's got, we've got it ready to go. It can go out in two days. It's not like we have to
One day, today.
Today, tomorrow.
And if you're fine with the default, no need to respond to the survey.
Right.
And if we do extend this window past this week, I think Arlene, you had mentioned, maybe even next week at annual town meeting on Tuesday.
That was something we talked about, but if it's too tight to do that, I mean, I think we're saying we could do it without that. But I think it would be great and advantageous to use that opportunity to have the carts there and have that conversation. And this isn't going to, it's going to be, we'll have to word it, so this is a one-time shot, this is your chance. The opportunity, she's not going to order as many extra ones if we do this because we have the data, the better data. So we'll have to have some extras, but if we can get the majority ordered correctly, I think it'll be done.
Just perspective of the default question though, because if, I think the people that we would miss with this survey, who are unable to do it, they're going to be the ones who are, we have to be the most worried about them getting the big carts. They probably have less use for it and would not be able to handle it as you heard.
And that's where I was kind of going with this, was just giving options where folks can do this in person perhaps. Like if we had, you know
Senior center, we have to be at the senior center.
Yeah, senior center, things like that, yeah. Like that would be great.
Get out the street, talk to people.
Mark?
Yeah, unfortunately, the carts aren't here. I think, I have the same reaction as Josh, and I think maybe even Andrew, holy smokes, how big is that 95? And I think if it was here, people would see that it's pretty, pretty large and
Couldn't fit it in here.
When you're done, I'm going to say something in favor of those who favor the 96, just so people do, some people do want it.
That's fine, I think the key points for me are, I think if we default too big, there's going to be a lot of people saying, I can't handle it, I can't locate it, I can't store it. And the town's going to have spending extra money and I'm concerned about that. I'm not at all concerned about the timing, only because we know that, you know, Waste Management isn't able to supply us the new trucks. So we've got a bargaining chip with what we're trying to do is saying, look, if it takes an extra week or 10 days, you know, the world doesn't end. And that's a big, a big deal. We're in this for the long haul.
Can you say a little bit more about the trucks?
Sure, wait, part of our contract is Waste Management agreed to purchase all new trucks. They're high-tech trucks, they've got all kinds of cameras, they have detectors on them, they grab the carts automatically and, you know, with arms and stuff like that. But the trucks are a long delivery item. And, you know, even when we were going through the contract, they said, you know, we got, we may not have them for July 1st. We may not have them for six months, nine months, a year later. And we said, well, you know, it's a requirement of the contract, but we're going to be reasonable, we hope they're going to be reasonable. So, you know, it, to me, it's not a showstopper. More importantly for me is, as we've seen with our 35 gallon, whatever it is, trash bins, barrels, carts, whatever we call them, you know, we're in this for the long haul.
Hit carts.
We're in this for the long haul. And so I would hate to see us buy some and have to end up with, you know, 1,000 extras of the wrong size or sizes people swap at the DPW. We don't have room for them and they're expensive. They're what, 50 bucks a piece or something like that, Lisa, in volume? So, you know, to take our time and do it right makes a whole lot more sense than rushing and rushing because we feel this artificial deadline of July 1st. When, you know, apparently, we're the only ones who feel that deadline because Waste Management doesn't feel the same about the trucks. And so from my perspective, I think when people see the carts, they'll opt for the, you know, and again, I thought Irwin's note was great because what we're providing is, I think the number was 115 gallons of two recycling, where most towns provide a single 95 gallon for dual-stream recycling. And so, for single-stream recycling, I'm sorry. So we're actually providing our residents more volume than you see if you go into Agawam, where they have a single 95 gallon, or you go into West Springfield or some of the other towns. They have the bigger cart, but remember, they're collecting everything every other week. And so from my perspective, taking the time and doing it right is better than rushing it and ending up with hundreds, if not more, extras. I'm not worried about the timing and I'm really, really concerned about the size because Josh pointed out, it's big. And for people saying, well, I know how big 95, you don't know how big 95 is, it's big.
Andrew?
Dan, go ahead. So I was just wondering, in terms of the excess cardboard, for example, have we had that conversation in terms of where, like do we have a place in town to put that? Can the DPW handle that? Have we thought about that as well as part of the conversation?
A lot, we've thought about it a lot.
I know you have, I just
No, but no, yeah, thank you very much. Currently, what we've done is we've changed the rules at the Recycling Center and we've allowed people now to bring excess cardboard down there. We need to make that dumpster larger, we're kind of working on that. And we have, we don't have a second location, but what we could do is, you know, just tell people, get a sticker and come down to the Recycling Center and they can bring their paper. I have some ideas for different locations, but that has to pass the powers to be before we talk about that.
And then the other, the other point I wanted to make, so have we, have we talked about like a swap internally within the town? If, you know, Mark has a large bin, rather than return it or pay more money, can I swap with Mark and can we track that?
But we have to keep a record of everything, so we, there's a serial number.
Let's all go through the DPW.
I'm trying to use recycling within our town.
Well, the bins have to go through, be recorded on a list, so everybody's number just goes with their house. So you can't swap it, maybe
So I couldn't swap with Mark because he has a bigger one and I have a smaller one?
But you can turn yours into the DPW and I can turn mine in and then we assign them to us.
And there might be some of that.
We're expecting what houses sell, what people are going to change.
Right, yeah, yeah, they'll be changing. I do want to mention, I agree with you completely, Andrew, that from driving around, that some people really need the 95 and want it for paper and cardboard. But I don't think it's 50%.
I agree, I mean, I think your solution is excellent. I think it gives, the best thing we can do for our town residents is to give them flexibility. I agree that the 48, 67 are fine for default. But personally, as a family of six people, you know, a lot of packages. And this idea, you've released a great point, like I didn't think that when it dumps out, if it's too tight, it doesn't fall out. And then that's kind of annoying. So I do think for the, to speak up for those families that actually need or want the 96, this gives them the option. And I do think there will be some people who want that.
I know they will.
But I think that if we
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're all kind of agreeing, we definitely do not want to buy any, minimize the extra purchases as much as possible, so.
I think the question is, we're not, we're not saying that the default has to be 48, 67. That's sort of what we've agreed as the Recycling Commission. But if the default were 48, 96, it still would work the same way with the opt-out, if you wanted to do that. I personally think it would be, the numbers, if I was betting, I didn't win Saturday, but if I was betting on something like this, I think the 67 is going to be more common than the 95, but we disagree.
I think that's fair to say.
Josh?
This just popped in my head, or at least on Sean, would, we have ADUs, I have ADUs on the mind, it's coming up pretty soon. Is that two trash cans or is that just one? If you have an ADU, do you get another trash?
We haven't gotten there.
No, it's one, well, if you're a two-family house, you can have two, but if you're a single-family house taxed, you get one.
Good point.
They better have some big bins.
And we need to work with people to live better within that, composting, more room for recycling. There are people at the workshop I did Saturday that said, that's just great, I'm going to have more room to recycle because I never have enough room to recycle. So convenient, easy, clean for the town, it's cheaper for the town, yes.
Mark brought up a point about the new trucks, right? So do these trucks, do they have the capability to make sure that folks aren't dumping trash into?
No, nothing.
It'll be the same process.
It has a camera that sees it dump and it'll know what house it was in. And so after the fact, it'll give us an AI report to tell us who was
Yeah, and we have to do follow-up. But I agree with the other side about giving them so much extra room. There's a lot of extra room for trash on the bottom. We don't want people to do that, we want the right amount of room to accommodate the recycling and not too much room.
Just a few things for our grant, it's $15 per household. They say if we have weekly recycling, it must be a 64 gallon to be reimbursable. So it says the grantee at his discretion may distribute carts that are smaller to fit the needs, but such carts are not eligible for the grant reimbursement.
However, if every, if every house gets either a 67 or a 95, that's
But if we have people opt out both for 48, then they're not going to be reimbursable.
And that would not be a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
Can I just say something also about the trucks? I don't want the people to think that the old trucks are not going to pick up trash because they, they will have that arm on it to grab the arm of, and a cart that is going to come in July and still dump it automatically. It's just not going to have the grabbing yet. So it's still going to be like semi-automated. It's not some person lifting it over their head and throwing it into the bin, so.
Thank you, Mark.
I was just going to make a motion just to move this along.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think right now, from what I'm hearing, you know, I'm in favor of doing it at the outset and giving people the opt-out option. But I would, I am concerned though about having it limited to just this week. You know, if we do think that there is enough leeway for us to go into next week and to give people an option too, I would like to do that, but again
I think it's great, but like they said, I think there needs to be an agreement with the hauler that we're going to be, not have all these in place on July 1st. It sounds like, but from my personal perspective, as I said, I'd rather do it right than do it quickly. And, you know, if that means we need to have a discussion with the hauler, then we ought to do that, but
I propose that we basically aim to try to do it the day after town meeting. Gives us a week to get Google forms online and blast it to the town. At town meeting, more people will be captured and then we go on like that Wednesday.
We can, we can contact Waste Management tomorrow. We have to wait for that, that shouldn't be a very quick question.
So if they're, if they say no July 1st or we're going to charge you X amount of dollars, we could have an emergency meeting and change this.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like it's more likely.
It sounds unlikely from what Mark says, so.
Well, they did promise to help us with the implementation. There's nothing better they could do than accommodate us with this.
Yeah, so I mean, I agree, I mean, I would like it to go into next week, just to give people time to, and get, find different ways to get to folks to make sure that people get a chance to actually look at this and make an option.
We've got a list developed and we have to develop more.
Yep, so, you know, if we can go until next Wednesday, I think after town meeting, then that
So would you propose to bring the carts to town meeting and then have a slip of paper maybe or like have
They were at the last town meeting, if you recall.
We can do that, we can
Whatever you think is best.
Definitely do that. And we said you could hand out something at the gate maybe for them to look at and they come into town meeting and then
Well, we want to, I think it would be ideal if they could, those who could, if those who haven't already done the Google form, maybe some people who are, who don't use a lot of computers, they can have, fill out a slip. use a lot of computers, they can have, fill out a slip, basically, and then maybe you guys can enter it.
That's right.
Thank you for all the work you're doing for this. Obviously, it's, that's a lot, but it's a huge responsibility, I know.
The question still comes down for the high percentage of people in town who don't fill out a.
Don't get the default.
What should the default be? And I, you know, I, I tend to agree with Josh that, that the default ought to be, you know, forty-eight gallons for plastic and glass and sixty-seven gallons for paper and cardboard. And, and for families like yours and others, you know, we target those, but they're a, we know that they're a lower percentage of the people in town, and say, you probably want to go in and ask for the ninety-five gallon.
I totally agree with that. I agree with the size, the sizes that we're just.
You know, and we do that. And it's a lot easier to target the larger.
Well, they're alert, they're alert. I mean, having done several workshops, people have been talking about this. People kind of know something's coming, that's, that they have to respond to. And I think they, they'll want to respond real quick. So, we, I don't know.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed system for identifying and purchasing recycling carts, and that the default be forty-eight gallons for glass and plastic and sixty-seven gallons for paper and cardboard, and give residents through Wednesday, the.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth of May to select an alternative.
Opt out.
Size.
Opt out.
Well, they don't opt out, they just get to select an alternative size for, for their recycling bins.
Second, any further discussion?
I'm just asking, any communications you send out that you just, you put the dimensions of them? I know that we have pictures, but if you could actually put how many square inches?
We can do that. They clearly need to see it, and we've tried to make.
No, I agree, but I think it would be helpful for that to.
One, one comment is, if days, if days really matter, Mark said through the fourteenth. Did, if we wanted to, we could say through the thirteenth, which is the end of Tuesday, and then they could deliver it on Wednesday. I don't know if days matter, but.
I'm, I'm fine. I'm willing to change it till the thirteenth.
Fourteenth is the.
Is the town meeting, through the end of the town meeting, for people to make their decision.
Oh, well, that's fine. When I, I think it's a little rough, she's got to input that. We'll do it right at the town.
Keep it the fourteenth.
Okay, fine. I also don't honestly feel, you guys have done so much work, and it's a lot to drive these things around. I honestly think it's enough to tell people it's at the DPW, as it's always been. If you, you should look at it there. Like, I don't want you to feel like you have to.
I can't drive it.
Display it all over town.
It'll be at a town meeting, but I think.
Just go to, tell people to go to the DPW.
It's DPW.
Yeah, don't, okay.
And that's been very helpful, because people, a lot of people are buying their stickers.
Yeah, it's not that far from Florida. Anything else?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Okay.
All right, thank you all so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Be outside.
All right. And I want, we'll move on to our water and sewer rate presentation. Thank you all for being patient. Yeah, thank you so much for joining us tonight. And we've got a PowerPoint. And so this, tonight, is a presentation. We're not going to be taking a vote tonight, but we're going to kind of just digest this presentation, ask questions, and then we'll revisit this at our next meeting. But I'll hand it over to you.
Great. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. My name is Jennifer Gilbert. I'm the project manager at Tyne Bond, and I'm joined with Josh Bouchard, who was the main contributor to doing the rate analysis, and will answer, excuse me, answer any questions at the end if you have it. So, tonight, we'll be presenting rate options to the board, which will enable the town to continue to provide reliable sewer and water service to their customers and fund capital improvements plans that are essential for the continued operation. So, if you go to the next slide. Just as a reminder, before I jump in into the rates, about the previous water study that we did, that was part of an ongoing diving into historically comprehensive approach that the town has been taking in the past. They've looked at stormwater, they've looked at sewer, roadways and street trees, so this is like a natural next step to look at the water infrastructure. And the study provided a plan that proactively replaces water mains. And if you go to the next slide, this is just what was presented at that last meeting, briefly showing the GIS map that showed the prioritization of the water main replacements, and quite a large budget that you would need in place to start, start this herculane effort of replacing your water mains. So, if you recall, about eighty percent of your water mains are AC, thirty percent are undersized, and over fifty percent are sixty years or older. In particular, that combination of age and material creates a more likelihood of that you're going to have emergency repairs. I know this has come up before the board and DPW, and you all are aware of that, there's the both costly impacts to emergency repairs, but also, unfortunately, disruption to your customers. So, being able to proactively replace as you go through the city and prioritize those locations that are more likely to fail is, would be an advantage to the community. So, the next question is, we'll have, that's a big nut to crack, like, that's a lot of capital improvements that you would need to do. So, the next question is, how do you fund that to fund the backlog of critical water infrastructure needs? So, one way to do it, and how we proceeded, was do an initial study of a rate evaluation, look at possible structure options that are, differ from your current structure, evaluate customer impacts and community comparison. So, how would these rate increases compare to similar-sized communities as yourselves? And also, just start looking at the anticipated Springfield water sewer expense increases. As you're aware, there's a very large capital improvement project that they are doing, and I'm sure you're being, starting to get correspondence for them. So, we want to make sure that that's part of the decision-making and information going forward with further evaluation of the rates. Another thing is that the intention of this, again, this is an initial study, is it to be a living model that can be adjusted as your needs change, capital improvements change, or, you know, as your main source of your water, and getting rid of your sewers from Springfield water and sewer, it's not always in your control to be able to set it yourself. So, one goal of this rate evaluation was to maintain a healthy retain earnings. It's crucial for rate-setting, ensures financial stability, supports future capital projects, and provides a buffer against unforeseen circumstances. My understanding is that currently, it sits in around the two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand range, which isn't necessarily the best, you know, the minimum five-hundred thousand. We like to see four months of operation maintenance costs, which be, for you guys, would be about a million dollars. So, it just puts you in a tight spot to be reactive and to, you want, you want to have a balance of not debt-funding all of your projects, like, being able to do those smaller projects, and that's part of our evaluation, was to include in that retaining earnings, being able to pay for projects just out of the capital you have. So. And then finally, just wanted to talk upon just the idea of looking at more of a long-term look at this. You can stagger rate increases, sort of an idea of where you're heading versus it, to avoid hopefully that big spike that is a jolt to, to your customers. Next one. One item that is of particular note is Long Meadow's customers. I think it goes without saying that you know your constituents. Most of it's residential, you have very little industrial and, excuse me, industrial, commercial use. So, ninety-nine percent of the town's customers are less than two inches in size. That was from fiscal year twenty-three, and there's not large parcels where you're looking to be doing large development, and that's not the characterization of the community either. So, some communities would get a significant part of their revenue from those, those users, and in the case with Long Meadow, it's really solely on the residents with single-family, family, maybe some double, multiple-family homes. So. Another thing, before I move on and get into the heart of the rate study, just want to mention that the town has significantly higher-than-average residential water usage, largely due to the above-average irrigation sprinkler system use. So, that was another thing as part of the rate study we wanted to be mindful of and try to address based on DPW's input and from, we hear, hearing from Lynn and the town manager. So, the next slide here is just a brief look at what is a rate evaluation process. You know, I think you've seen rate studies in the past, and several of you are very familiar with the process, but in, in the end, you want to have a net look at your expenses versus revenue. And what we did is we looked at your expense data, debt service, capital expenditures, and we also included some inflation for those capital projects, so that you are keeping pace with, as we all know, prices will be going up. For revenues, we utilize the existing statements that we received from Lisa and from Ian. We used the meter inventory, three years of usage data to build out the model, and then we did a calibration as well. So, Josh calibrated it to make sure that it was within the accuracy range that we're expecting for projecting in the future. So, based on the projected expenses and revenue, we can identify proposed rates. And then next is evaluate customer affordability and rate recommendations. So, that just gives you a brief overview of it. So, we, we're asked to look both at water and sewer rates. So, first, I'll look at the preliminary rate evaluation for water. This graph is showing you the operation, operation and maintenance is shown in blue, which is fairly steady. It is showing some increases over the years. The major expense there would be buying water from Springfield Water and Sewer. And orange is the town's capital improvement plans, and you can see that that's driving the increase in expenses for the next five years, totaling about fifty-three million dollars over the next five years as the current capital improvements plan. Okay, the next slide. So, we looked at two alternatives for the rate structures. The first option is Alt-A. We looked at your existing rates and then just proposed rate increases. So, that was applied both to the meter charges, as well as your unit charge, meter charges of the flat fee that you would think of. And then the unit charge would be per usage per cubic feet. Okay, and then we'll go to the next slide. This graph is just showing you graphically what it, where your relative increases in cost would be. So, if you're looking at this, blue is your operation and maintenance cost. So, again, relatively steady. I mean, there's obviously going to be expenses that'll increase over time. Gray is your existing debt, so things that you're already paying for previous projects. Black is the new debt, debt for the capital projects, and then the red is the capital outlay for smaller projects. And then to help spread the cost of the work, routine earnings really needs to build initially. So, part of the rate increases is to start building that retained earnings to get to a more healthy level for long-term sustainability of your, your enterprise fund. And like I mentioned previously, we're really looking for that million dollars if we can, four months of operation and maintenance costs. At five, you get time, you get to the end of fiscal year twenty-nine. And then, just to literally put it on, on the paper, what is your existing versus your, the proposed tiered rate? So, Alt-B, we're looking at an alternative tiered existing structure. In this case, right now, you have an annual base charge, and then you do have a flat usage charge, which is shown in the middle, the non-orange highlighted section. And then, what we're proposing for the future would be at the top, taking those annual base charges and actually having them paid quarterly with the quarterly bills. And then the second thing that would be added is doing a tiered usage per cubic feet. So, the more you use, the, the higher the rate would be, is what we are proposing as an option for you guys to consider. And the, the reason why you would want to look at this type of restructuring is, especially during wet summers, I know this is a concern for the community, is that when it rains a lot, people aren't necessarily watering, which means revenue is going down. And so, what we've done is that not only are we taking the annual charge and making it quarterly, but we're also increasing the percentage of the revenue that's coming from that flat fee, so that you'll have a more steady revenue stream that's coming in. And then, as usage, you know, we do want to make sure that you're getting the usage charges based on amount you're getting. So, generally, increasing revenue generated for higher users, so the more water they use, the more cost per cubic foot. And, yeah, reduces the unpredictability due to weather conditions is typically why a community would choose to go this route. Okay, to the next slide. So, Alt-B again, we're talking about that modified, similar colors, similar type of graphic here, and we're staggering the rate increases. Same goals as the existing rate structure. The percentages are about the same as well for the percent increases, where you'll see, if you go to the next slide, where, where is the difference between the Alt-A and Alt-B, maintaining your existing or doing a modified structure? So, you would want to look at the customer impact. So, what we have shown in this graph, and I'll walk you through it, because I know you're initially like, what does this mean? Annual bill for average residential customers. And what we're showing is in blue is the average customer, and in orange is the largest customer, which, let's see, it's thirty-four hundred cubic feet for average users and just about five-hundred-and-fifty hundred cubic feet for the largest user in the community. So, for the average community, which is in blue, so look at the bottom half of this graph, the existing rate structure is solid, and we have about a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per year increase or fifty cents a day. However, in a modified rate structure, which was Alt-Two-B, they'll be paying slightly less at a hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars a year or thirty-five cents a day. And that's all in comparison for fiscal year twenty-six, I believe it was, yes. Now, if you want to jump up to the top half of the graph, for the largest water user, the modified structure is the dotted line, and the existing structure is in the solid line. So, by switching to the modified line, as you can see, the dotted line is above for the higher user and lower for the existing average customer. So, it's just shifting some of that revenue to your larger users and overall of reduction for an average user, which makes up most of your, your, your community. And one other last thing before we go to the next slide is just checking for afford availability. So, we like to aim for utility bills to stay below three-point-five of the customer's annual income, and we have evaluated both median income as low as the lowest per capita, and in both scenarios, you're far below the thresholds. And in my conclusion slide, it'll show those percentages for you. Okay, and then my final graph about water rates is showing a weight, water weight comparison. Again, this is Long Meadow's average annual households. If you implemented alternative B, the modified structure, so for fiscal year twenty-six, compared to other water companies or public water supplies in the area, you're in the lowest quartile. It should be noted, just because I know the question comes up, is how many people are doing tiered systems? Is this common? Would we be an outlier? It's very common, especially for utilities of your size. Those shown with the asterisk are the ones that actually do have tiered structures. So, you would be one among many, but totally every community needs to make the decision if it's the right fit for you guys. Okay? So, in conclusion about the water, capital projects are driving these rate increases. As you can see, it was fifty-three million dollars is the reason why we'd be increasing the rates. Both structures, either Alt-A or B, will build your routine earnings to a healthy level, and as I mentioned previously, the financial burden for both of those is well below the threshold for, for household bulk burdens. Alt-A, as a reminder, the existing rates will be increased to fund these CIP projects and without modifying the structure that you currently have. And then Alt-B, it will reduce the variability in revenue, creating more stable predictable revenue stream. Adding the tiered uses is very common and will increase revenue collected from higher users, and it's a relatively cost save, cost savings for an average customer over the, keeping your existing structure. Okay? Next, we'll, a lot of, these slides will look very familiar, because we're just going through it again, but this time for sewer. So, in this graph, it's showing the operation and maintenance similarly with Springfield Water and Sewer. That's your, by far, your largest O and M cost. Two percent escalation was assumed as part of our analysis. And, you know, differing from the water enterprise fund, it's only about ten million dollars in CIP projects in the next five years. So, as you'll see in the next few slides, a significantly less, significantly lower rate increase is being proposed. So, for Alt-A, the existing rate and proposed rate structure, again, a little bit repetitive, but we're going to be increasing both the meter and usage charges for both, in both scenario. Since the total cost of the sewer projects are smaller, thus rate increases are lower. Okay, next slide. Very similar slide, as you can see, instead of in the range of twenty percent rate increases over the next four years, it's more like from six to two percent, and we'll have the same goal of wanting to get routine earnings increased. The O and M cost for sewer is less, so actually, if you hit a million, it'd be about seven months of an O and M expenses. We have that assumed right now for this analysis, but if you chose to set it at five-hundred-thousand, you know, have it more in the four, four months range, absolutely could be possible. But just for consistency between the two models, so that you're doing apples to apples, we did keep it as a one-million-dollar retainer. Then, the second option for your consideration is Alt-B, that's the proposed modified base rate. Similar to the water rates, we recommend splitting your annual base charge into a quarterly base charge, and there is not a tiered structure for sewer, so this would just be maintaining your flat usage. So this would just be maintaining your flat usage by residential commercial and sewer for your sewer, uh, commercial for the usage, pardon me. It should be noted, I guess you can skip that, it's fine. Yeah, we're good. All right, next slide, Alt B, enterprise performance proposed rates. Two percent to zero, just maintaining. So there's less of an increase required if you do Alt B, but achieve the exact same goals as Alt A. And then similarly, customer impact. In this scenario, we looked at the average residential annual bill. It's less than ten cents a day we're talking about to, to be able to pay for the ten million dollars in capital improvement plans in, in fiscal year twenty-six. So relatively low income, I mean, I spend more of that on coffee. So we also check for affordability, well below the three-point-five threshold. And we find that it's reasonable for these, this increase. Similar to water rates, in conclusion, capital projects are driving rate increases. Return earnings will be grown to about a million dollars. You're well below the threshold for affordability. Alt A will maintain your existing structure, but increase to accommodate and pay for the planned CIP projects. And the modified rates will reduce variability because you'll be shifting to about thirty percent of your, your revenues coming from unit charge and seventy percent would be usage charge. So relatively saving, cost saving for an average customer also under, under this with how we modified it, so. The final slide for your consideration would be just talking about, you know, like, what was the impetus for us? Why are we doing this? I know that's always the question is, why my bill? Why do I have to increase my, I don't want to pay more. Well, to be able to continue to get reliable service, not have disruptions to your service, you don't want boil orders. This is, you know, you may still have those things happen, but the idea here is that you want to reduce the frequency and hopefully by making a proactive replacement of your water mains and to make the upgrade, needed upgrades to your sewer system, that we will have less impact overall. And I appreciate the, the thought and effort and time that goes into making this really important decision about putting more money in, you know, out of people's pockets. So I just wanted to recognize that. And then the other goal here is just making sure that we can retain those earnings and to a healthy level. So next steps, I would recommend, and after talking with Sean and Lisa and the rest of the DPW is, you know, if you really are looking at the modified tiered structure, I'd recommend doing a little bit more analysis to refine those tiers. We made a baseline assumption, but based on doing a deeper dive into your data, figuring out where you want to hit those levels and balance affordability for different usage sizes would be recommended. And really want to also focus on consistency and quality of consumption data. I know there was some issues Josh was having with a few years of data and no fault to Lisa. There was a change in, in how the information was being recorded. And, but just having a consistent next three years would be, would be helpful or, you know, going forward as you build and make this more of a living model and reliability. And then evaluate customer impacts for mean-based or senior citizen discount. I know that was another thing that the committee has been talking about for some time and, and is of concern to lower-income people in the community as to whether they could get some type of discount while also providing the needed revenue that, that the DPW needs to provide service. And then for, the other thing is further evaluate possible increases with Springfield, Springfield Water and Sewer. I know that you guys probably are having intense conversations within the coming days or years of what is coming next and, and making sure that you're keeping up, up to pace with that and, and making sure it's hopefully not unpredictable. And then just reiterating, living model, same with the water study. Just we want to recommend to keep continually to improve it and refine because then once you start something, it's good to keep it up to date and that way it's more useful to the community and to your, to your customers. So with that, we can go to the water looking question mark that we came across, which I thought you'd appreciate. And either Josh or I or the town can help me.
Great, thanks so much. Go ahead, Josh.
This is great. Thank you very much. I've been banging the drum for a while about increasing our meter rates, which I, and I think that is a great start no matter what we do. Just a question generally from other times you've looked at for tiered pricing. Do you find that having the tiered pricing affects behavior? So people are cognizant of not hitting the top tier. Can that then lead to revenue shortfalls because people are, maybe in the short term that happens? But is that something you see or is people are going to have a green lawn no matter what?
I, yeah, I have an answer, but please, Josh, yeah.
So according to studies, there's a lot of price inelasticity with water usage. It's similar to fuel usage for a car. People that are going to use high amounts of water, they're going to use high amounts of water regardless of what you're charging them. And vice versa, those who are using little bits of water are going to use little bits of water regardless of what the price is. Just those people are typically more price cognizant versus the higher-end users that don't care and they just want their green lawns. So typically when we've introduced these tiered structures, there's not a dip in revenue. It's pretty consistent, but it, it can happen. There's, there could be a potential variability in it. So I don't want to say a hundred percent.
That was my impression. I've never read a study on that though. So, great, thank you.
Andrew. Actually, that was kind of my exact same question because just for your, for your feedback, when I read slide fifteen and this claim, alternate B, alter, alternative B, the modified rate will reduce variability in revenue, creating a more stable and predictable revenue stream. When I first read this without hearing your explanation, I didn't understand that. That seemed counterintuitive because it seems to me, well, if you're going to charge people a tiered rate, the people at the highest might start using less water because they don't. And then that seemed less reliable to me. But I'm now understanding, I believe, that that's more, this is a more reliable mainly because your meter rates are increasing.
Yes, so in this scenario, this, we're going up to thirty-eight percent of the revenue would be.
Right. So a third alternative would be to make it, to raise the meter rate, which I think this board is pretty sympathetic to doing that, to be honest. And not having a tier system, which would be the most reliable as far as income goes because therefore you're getting the definite meter rate and then nobody is deterred from using more water because it's too expensive at the top of the tier. So that I think would be worth having numbers at, at a follow-up meeting to maybe suggest, you know, alternative A, but with a higher meter rate. And then, I mean, that's, we really want kind of as much predictability as we can. We know that when it rains, it kind of messes things up a little bit. We want to minimize at the end of the year when we're off. But to me, if I'm thinking about how to make this the most reliable as far as the money we're going to get for the town, the highest reasonable meter rate and then a flat rate for everybody so that nobody's deterred from using water, that seems to be the best compromise, in my opinion.
I think that starts to butt up against, then we're people on fixed incomes. Then, you know, the most reliable would be charge everyone three grand and that's it.
You mean without regard, regardless of water?
Use as much water you want and then we'll just charge you three grand for your meter.
Well, that would be totally unfair.
No, but that's what we're getting towards a bit. If, if we get the meter rate too high.
Oh, I agree. Not too high, just reasonable. I mean.
But we have to balance predictability and being steady with also being fair. And I think, and which is why we have.
Well, it's not that the people who are using more water aren't paying more, they are paying more. It's just we're talking about should they pay an even higher percentage?
Correct.
And I do think it's valid that if you get a bill that's like five thousand dollars when it used to be two thousand dollars or three thousand dollars, it used to be one thousand dollars, that might deter people from using so much water on their lawn. I mean, I think it's possible. And I think it's also possible that people, some people just water lawn no matter how much it costs. But if we're just thinking about how to be the most reliable as far as the town's income, I, I feel like that's the compromise. There's probably no right or wrong answer. It's fine. But we need to get the money from these rates somehow and.
Yeah, just a, so for affordability, that can get tricky if you're just wholeheartedly only doing a fixed rate. Because it does bring into, you know, equity and like, well, why are they, why is my neighbor who is running?
That is what we do now though, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, Dan.
Thanks. Yeah, so I totally agree with Andrew's points in terms of the, having a, you know, raising that rate. We want predictable revenue. Something this board has talked about for, I don't know, months, maybe years. But in regards to like discounts for seniors or other folks in town, could you just talk about how we, how this board could go about potentially doing that? Because that's something that I'm certainly interested in.
You want to speak on that one too? Okay, so I, I just actually recently looked at a senior discount for a, another utility. And what's difficult about implementing something like that is you need to know all of the, all of the residents that would fall within that senior discount range so that you can figure out what the accuracy in your revenue drop-off would be. Because for closed systems like this, you need to take in a certain amount of revenue regardless of where that's coming from. So if people are getting charged less money, everyone else needs to make up the difference for that. So that, that can be very complicated. What we did in this other analysis is we looked at a fifteen percent across the board rate decrease for senior citizens or citizens that fell within a certain income bracket. And that resulted in a need to raise the rates for everyone else by about two percent. So it, it can have a pretty large impact on everyone else depending on what the, what the criteria is for a senior connection.
Of a particular community, like what percentage of them would qualify for it?
Great, thank you. Mark.
Thanks, Denise. I have a bunch of questions. I've gone through these very, very thoroughly and I've done a lot of, done a lot of work on, on the water systems and on this. And so first one, just a couple of comments. The meter size of half inch and three-quarter inch, people need to know, it's not a choice. It was, there was a zoning change. Residences moved from half inch to three-quarter inch. I think in the late sixties, early seventies, those are all residential homes. So to differentiate them is no purpose at all. It's really when your house was built and what you ended up getting. And so for most purposes, and as you did, they're considered the same. Above three-quarter inch, it may be the house that went to extra, you know, a couple of dishwashers or whatever the heck it is. But, but I think you need to, people need to understand that that's really the basis behind that, that kind of thing. The other thing that I'm concerned about is you talked about the, what you called the water stabilization fund, I think. Or actually you called it the capital fund. I, I grew up here believing it was the rate stabilization fund. Because, and I said this at the last meeting, when we set water rates, we do it the inverse of the way we set town budgets. What we do is we know our expenses and we guess on our revenue because we're setting the expenses, the, the revenue for the coming year. And so we guess on what the, what the usage is going to be. And the one thing I can guarantee you, we never guess right. We either guess low or we guess high, we never guess right. And, and so I think when Springfield Water and Sewer were here, they talked about this concept of true-up. At the end of the year, they said, you use more water than you so quote-unquote contracted for. You owe us an extra X dollars, you use less, we deduct it from them. So it's, it's kind of the true-up. But that fund has always been required and necessary and utilized for that, what I'll call end-of-year true-up with, with Springfield Water and Sewer. It had never been the capital fund. Now, over the years, it had gotten large and occasionally we used it, in fact, for the small projects. I remember using it for the small projects, but we mostly bonded larger projects. And so just so people understand that, you know, we need to maintain that fund. You say for capital, for capital emergencies and expenses, that's fine. But we really need it for that end-of-year true-up and adjustment of the rates because we can never know what, what people are going to be using. The other request I would have is the, the slides you had, and I think slide thirteen, fourteen or eighteen, the ones that you had, the bar charts with the different colors.
Yeah.
It would be extreme, I don't know, Mike, if you can put that one up. But it would be extremely helpful because you have at the bottom of that, that chart, a major blue bar that you call operating expenses. But I think that it would help us and help the town to separate out what we pay Springfield, make that as green for what our operating expenses are. Because some of those operating expenses are literally town, or the city of Springfield or Springfield Water and Sewer pass-throughs. And so I think it would be useful because much of that increase is literally coming out of the city Springfield and not related to the, the town of Long Meadow. And that would help us look at that a lot better. The other thing I, I was concerned about is, is tiers. And, and the reason I'm concerned about tiers is that the way we run our town is we have to have a different tier every quarter because we do quarterly billing. And I looked at, that's what I did over the weekend. I looked at all fifty-four-hundred-and-ninety, that's how many there are water meters. And I looked at every usage by quarter because I have that data. And you can't set a tier level without adjusting it every quarter because especially in the, you know, the, the irrigation quarters, our rates go way up. And so tiers would be very, very difficult, in my opinion, to administer and, and monitor and to control. And frankly, I guess my comment to the select board is, we have a system and the system consists of three primary sources of revenue, right? Use it, you're, well, we charge by usage, but we look at meeting three primary sources of, of expenses. And that is capital needs, our cost of our operations, and then the, whether or not we want to modify this, what I call water stabilization fund. Okay, and so, you know, we use a meter rate and a variable rate to, to do that. And as Andrew indicated, we can adjust the meter rate and for years and years we were low. For the people at home, and I know I'm going on for a long time, the, the meter rate was illegal in Long Meadow for years. We implemented it and it got brought up at a town meeting that it's illegal. Our charter said, you shall charge for water by volume. We needed a charter change, so we had to withdraw the meter rate. And so the meter rate came back in very low. We, we increased it once, two years ago, we increased it this past meeting. You know, from my perspective, and it's my perspective only, you know, getting to this whole idea of how much you charge the little users, the big users, we can take the capital needs and say, if you're connected to the water system, you have to pay your share of the capital needs. That's the fixed rate, you know, Josh is shaking his head. That makes a lot of sense. It'd be very, very high if we did a hundred percent of that and we knew that, so we were working our way up to it. But I, I have a real tough time to say, the city of Springfield is charging us a flat rate per cubic yard or hundred cubic feet or whatever they charge. But we're going to charge a variable rate because we can do that. The, the towns you indicated that charge variable rates aren't on the Springfield City Water and Sewer system because they charge a fixed, a fixed rate. I feel very uncomfortable charging a variable rate when we're paying a fixed rate, you know, personally. So I, I think what we need to do is say, the current system we have works. Let's look at what our capital costs are, put in a plan as we did, folks. In the, in the select board, we knew that we needed a stormwater utility. But we couldn't get there in one year and we set a, an eight or ten-year horizon to slowly move to where the town was fully funding the stormwater system. We ought to do the same thing with water capital through fixed rates. We adjust it percentage based on the percent you use. And the system we use is, the bigger the meter, you know, the more you, you have the capability of using, the more you're paying for it. And after that, we pay for, pay for the operations based on, on volume. And again, we guess on it. The last thing I'll tell you is, you're saying we need to build that reserve fund up to a million dollars. We can do that tomorrow. How do we do it tomorrow? We have a very, very dry year. Right? And we're going to, because we make an assumption, we use the past, what, five years running the average of water usage? If we, if we guess high and water rates and water uses are lower, you know, we're screwed up. But if we guess low and water usage is higher, that fund goes up. And I've been on the select board now fifteen years and that fund's been over a million bucks and we've used it up. So it, you know, we can charge people for it, but we may be better off, you know, using adjustment based on the volume we use as an assumption on our, on our rate system. All in all, you know, I think the system we have can work. I think you said that the system we have can work. You know, we, we look at fixed and variable rates and we, we move forward with that. The last thing I'll talk about is the sewer system. We use a quarterly sewer system with a cap. And I didn't see that cap anywhere in your discussion because. discussion because we've gone through a lot of iterations on this. And people get very upset when they're paying sewer fees on irrigation water. And so with the help of the DPW, a couple of years ago, we set a 55-unit quarterly cap on sewer rates. That needs to be taken into account when we set, well, sewer fees. And I didn't see that in your.
Did you know about that?
I was aware of it. I know it was a while ago. Do you recall putting it in?
No, that's not.
So we need to probably see that.
That tweaks that a lot. And it makes a big, big difference in, well, I'll call April through August, September kind of usages numbers. And it's not going to, it's not going to make that big a difference, but it's not the two or three cents. I think the number we're going to find is going to be probably twice that because of the cap system. There's a lot of people who hit that quarterly cap. So I have a lot more comments, but I'd just like to start with there. And like I said, when you get to tier systems, I've looked at the tiers, it's a mess on a quarterly basis. We'd be in the system constantly.
Thanks. I just wanted to add some more to what Mark was saying about the cap. And this maybe make more sense to you. But in some of the research you've done on other communities and how they've structured their rates, I've noticed other communities, instead of doing a cap on a sewer, they do like an 80% sewer charge as opposed to 100%. So it makes it a little bit easier for the calculation. But I guess I'm just putting that on your plate to look at when you go back and look at that. Because I don't want to speak for the board, and I actually have no role in this at all. But I think they maybe would consider seeing how other communities have done that. Because I know it's pretty common to not bill 100% for sewer with the recognition that not all of that is making it to our sanitary sewer system.
Lynn, just as a response, we looked at irrigation and we looked at that 80%. We looked at a bunch of things. And that 80, you know, we have people in town who water their lawn twice a day, whether it needs it or not. You know, and I don't condone that. I don't think it's right. Clearly, it doesn't need to be done. But in truth, they shouldn't be paying sewer fees for what's going into the irrigation. And so this 55 cap probably isn't the perfect solution, but it's the one that, you know, Lisa came up with. It 's workable. And since we implemented, all those complaints and discussions pretty much calmed down.
An alternative would be doing meters, you know, for all the irrigation.
Yeah. And an alternative was a second meter, but the cost of that is, not only for the installation and the meters, but then administering, oh, yeah, yeah. But, and believe me, there have been plenty of residents who said, can I put in a second meter just for irrigation? And the answer was, no, you can't because we didn't want us to do the meter reading and all that kind of stuff.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
Just one quick question, because Mark alluded to the fact that maybe the town doesn't have the capability for a tiered system. I'm not suggesting that I support a tiered system. I just want to hear from the town, is that something that, if it were to be implemented, do we have the ability to do that?
I didn't mean the town can't do it. I mean, munis can do all of it. You'd be shocked at what munis can do for water systems.
It's actually sort of how the cap is working right now because it's tiering at 55. It goes to $0 per unit. So it's easy to add the tiers.
What I indicated was the quarterly changing tiers every quarter would be something we'd have to go into the system and change the tier.
You just have to change the threshold.
I can understand.
The town, because we're making it sound like that's something that's really difficult. I'd like to, it's not, it's not difficult.
And typically, you wouldn't be changing it per quarter. You'd set the rates for the tiered structure for that year.
And it would be set in a way to account for all that variability seasonally. So you'd have a huge dip in your winter months where no one's using water, and then your usage would ramp back up, and you'd make a lot more of your revenue within the summer months, assuming that it wasn't a super wet summer.
To your point, by increasing the percentage that you'd be getting from a fixed fee or your unit charge, that that would lessen that.
So the way, the way it would look, just so it's clear, the year starts, everyone's kind of like ramping up to 0 to 2,000, and everyone's paying their rate. And then it's not till the very end that some people are going to go over the benchmarks to get, and then you get it. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I actually see how it would work.
I don't think that's correct because munis looks at every quarterly usage. It doesn't look at your total annual usage.
It's not cumulative through the year.
It's not cumulative.
So each quarter will have a threshold. So Mark's point is actually right. You'd have to be resetting the threshold every quarter because winter and summer are different?
The usage is the usage. So once the usage goes over, so I look at it.
So it is cumulative then?
Well, it's not cumulative quarter to quarter. What it is, is each quarter's going to have a different amount of usage. So you'll have different sized buckets. Once a bucket gets filled, it'll spill into the next bucket. Once you hit the next quarter, the buckets reset and you start filling the buckets again.
But like in the winter quarter, no one's ever going to get to the threshold, is what they're saying. You'll only see people hitting the tier in the summer.
Typically, yes.
Now I understand. That's fine.
But it would be, it would be the same rate structure every single quarter. You'd just make up most of your revenue in the summer months.
It's the way it is now.
Yes.
Correct.
You just have buckets now with a tiered structure rather than just one large, big pool.
Can I ask one more? I hate to keep it going because it's a really long meeting tonight. Could you go to slide nine? I just was wondering, you know, you, for these meter chargers, I just wondered why, you know, it's a 22% increase, 24% increase, 20%, and then only a 4% increase. It's just, it's more conservative to basically get in a better financial situation sooner? Or one could like make it a little more even and make that rate increase a little more of a gradual slope?
Yeah. One of the biggest things is by the time you get to fiscal year '29, as long as you don't have a very wet summer, we'd be ramping up to get to a healthy level for the routine earnings. So that pot of money that.
Okay. So it's just a more conservative approach to kind of do it all sooner?
Kind of. The big driver for those large increases to begin with is due to your current capital schedule. So I have the model up in front of me so I can look at these numbers in real time. You're going from $921,000 worth of capital projects in fiscal year '25 to about $5 million in capital projects in fiscal year '29. After fiscal year '29, the capital projects kind of stable out, and you're looking at about $5 million in capital expenditures year to year. That 22%, 24%, and 22% rate increase is to get you up to that capability of being able to pay those projects off. Once you get to that capability, your rate increases don't need to be as large because you're already there.
It'll be flattened out.
So is this because of our backlog?
Correct. So if you were to push capital projects out, which I don't advise doing, you could spread out those rate increases even further.
We've been doing that for decades.
Correct. And that's the problem. This is the result of doing that.
Can you imagine if had we had the foresight to think about this, you know, 20 years ago? You know, we've been, since I've been on the board in three years, we're talking about this every couple of months. And the projects that we have to do, we've neglected the rate structure for years. And now look at what we're talking about, what we're going to have to pay.
Correct.
It's crazy. So, I mean, everyone listening at home, like, this is why we're having these conversations, and we're actually finally going to put something in place because years of inaction. And that's the fact.
All right. Anything else on this one?
Where do we go from here?
Well, we'll talk about it next meeting. This was just a presentation today. We had a chance to ask questions, and we're going to talk about it at the next meeting.
There's a memo from Lisa on here. It's about, all right.
Oh, you want to talk about this as well?
It's just to explain to you that you need to plan to prepare to make votes on the 19th and the 2nd.
Right.
For the current.
For the new race for next year.
For FY '26 rates, but also the last billing quarter of '25.
Right. Okay. Great. All right. Well, thank you all so much for being here. Really appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We will now move into old business. The first item under old business is approval of draft meeting minutes. We have three drafts of meeting minutes to approve. Any comments? Questions about any of these? Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I had sent Mike some corrections to, I think, these are the first two. The last one was like a sentence and a half. But I'll move that we approve the January 21st select board minutes as corrected. And they were typos and whatever. I mean, there's nothing grammar, nothing specific.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll make a motion. We approve the February 24th minutes with the corrections again.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And I'll move we approve the April 18th minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those abstaining?
Thanks.
All right. And now, next up, we have the Bottle Shop Annual Liquor License Update. And Mike, can I turn this one over to you to provide?
Yeah, definitely. Actually, we have Jim that just walked.
Oh, great timing.
Yeah.
Something I will, okay, I apologize.
No, no problem. You made it here.
Yeah. So at the last select board meeting on April, well, to backtrack to the annual liquor license renewal season, the select board had requested, had approved Bottle Shop Liquor License for a 90-day period of time with the request to provide a purchase and sale agreement or a lease agreement. That time came up. And then as the April 7th meeting approached, select board then extended that to May 5th tonight to either hear from Jim Thomas or for him to provide an update on a purchase and sale or a lease agreement.
Great. Yeah. Thank you, Mike. And Mr. Thomas, thank you for joining us. And we are ready to hear your update.
So I've had a purchase and sale in place for quite some time. It's just, I'm not crazy about putting it into public record, the whole purchase and sale, just the nature of a business deal. I think you're welcome to understand that. And we've been waiting for the PONs to finish the plot. And we're in negotiations with the PONs on a lease agreement. They've been sitting on a lease agreement that we've drawn up about three weeks now and have heard nothing back from them. But that's where we stand. The license, the sale is ready to go through. Just need to get a, no, it's a good standing from the state. And I've just, with all the nature of the fire, I haven't been filing the business taxes because I've been waiting for the insurance claim to come through. And that has just come through this year, too.
Okay. So you have a purchase, you said you've had a purchase and sale in place, but it's really about the folks that are buying this from you and getting them, their lease all set with the PONs. Okay.
Yeah.
Josh?
So, Juan, I don't know if you've watched our meetings. We've really been patient on this and really want to not take, not take this from you, your license, because none of this was your fault.
Right.
I really wish you had told us about this much earlier, the purchase and sale agreement. I understand you don't want it to be everyone's business, but we had asked you for it. Wish we had known. My problem is, this sale agreement, as of, it cannot go through. You can only own one liquor store in town, in a town. That's state law. And the timing is an impossibility right now with what you have as a closing date because you're, there's no way you'll get an application through by then. So we've always wanted more information. I think we have it now, and I appreciate you doing that. Now I think we need to have dates certain, not, we're working on it, not, we're waiting on the other party. We got to put, we got to have some teeth on this. And because we've really been patient, and I want this to work out for you, and I really mean that. But it's been a long time, and I would like to have some faith that it won't be much longer time.
No, I am going, now that, now that the space has become available, and as you know, there's not an abundance of spaces in town to put this license. And so I was waiting, waiting on that. I was waiting on the insurance settlement, both of which have taken an extraordinary amount of time. And landlords are amazingly uncooperative. That said, I am, you know, pedaling as fast as I can.
So beyond that, there is an issue of the ownership that need to address.
It's going to be set up as a corporation. Yes, he has a whole set of management in there.
Well, it's the ownership is the issue.
But it'll be set up as a corporation.
The owner, it goes a step beyond that. The owner, you can't be the owner of two corporations. ABC keeps track of this. So if it gets rejected, if you submit it as-is, even with a corporate assigning, it would get rejected. Or they would, it would get rejected, actually. I know it would. So I'm telling this informationally as well, so you can take care of this now.
Yeah.
So he would need to find a new buyer?
No. It could be assigned to a corporation that is owned by someone else.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I just think we need to, I don't know. I don't know how to, I do this for a living. I know how it is dealing with landlords. It can be very difficult. But at the very least, we need progress reports, I think. I'm hesitant to put a drop dead date on anything because I don't want to put you in a bad position. But we need, we need to at least have a date where we have an update. I know there's not a lot of other places, but there are.
I don't mean to call you out, Joshua, but you give me a list, I'd be more than happy to talk to somebody else.
Old Town Hall, maybe?
No, no, no. Old Town Hall.
No, that's a basketball gym.
I thought it was a dance studio.
But yeah, we at least need to have.
Yeah. No, I'll be more than happy to. And do you want it through town meeting? Can I have a conversation with Mike?
Well, no, I mean, town meeting is, we don't need.
Not town meeting, but select, select board meeting.
Yeah, I would say.
It doesn't make that much difference to me. It's just easier for me to get to Mike.
Oh, no, you can absolutely talk to Mike. In my opinion. I don't know if anybody else feels differently. But yeah, I think by the next meeting, I'd like to know what's going on with the lease. Maybe you could keep us updated every meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And in the form, in written form, email or letter so that Mike can share with us would be best. I mean, and like Josh said, Mr. Thomas, you know, we know this happened to you under no, not your own doing. And so, you know, we do want to make this work for you. But I think the lack of communication, the lack of updates that we've received, we've kind of just felt left in the dark a little bit about what's been going on. And I understand that you've been trying to make a move on your end.
This ball really started moving middle of December of the landlords even reaching out to us. That has been a closed door. They have rejected me at every step of the way, even though I have expressed interest in going back in. I've written them letters. I've been in contact with them. My lawyers have been in contact with them. They had us draw up the new lease, which is more than the sale a lot. But they wanted me to pay for the lease and not them. And then I've heard, had no updates from them, as I said, for three weeks. And we put two phone calls into them.
Okay. Yeah. But even getting that update from you, like, that would have been helpful.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your situation. I apologize.
Yeah, yeah. No, just, yeah, just let us know what's going on. And yeah, and I think that's a great idea with the, with the reports and if they're written so that we can take a look at them. That'd be, that'd be best. Okay.
I can do that.
All right. Great. Yeah. So I think with that, I don't, well, we did, we did have a.
Contingency date was today.
Yeah. So we'll have to take a vote to extend the contingency date.
Yeah. If you're looking for progress reports at each meeting, I mean, I don't know if that's tenuous to approve by the meetings, but if that's something you want to do.
Yeah. I know, Josh, I think you have the most experience with this.
Well, I've never been in this situation. It's a unique one. I mean, well, you're the chair. Do you want, do you want this on the agenda every, every two weeks? I don't think so.
No.
Can we, I don't know if it's delegate or, you know, designate our liquor license, you know, coordinator here to let us know if there's any, you know, any, any changes. But I think, like Josh had said, we can't let this continue. And so I don't, I don't want it to be a standing-ish item on a select board agenda. But if, you know, a month from now, six. but if, you know, a month from now, six weeks from now, and eight weeks from now, nothing's been done, you know, we're going to run out of ability...
Yeah, no, I recognize that.
So, you know, and I think the issue is, we meet every other week, you know, twice a month, first and third Mondays a month. Let Mike know that, you know, we don't need to take any action, but if we don't hear from you, we likely will. I think that's the best.
We do have to, the license expires today.
Right, so we've got to do something.
So I, I'm just looking at the calendar, we could, I would say June sixteenth.
Do you want me to pay for the license and issue it without a location?
No, we can't. It's a pocket license. We can't do that, yeah. No, it's not, it's not that money. It's, there's four of these licenses, and they should be used in town.
Yes.
And that's, that's the issue. That's always been the issue. And so, and that's why, you know, it's not any personal, it's just, these are, they're good for the town, they bring in revenue, we have to do it. So, I would say, even if it takes you two more weeks to get the lease done, three more weeks, then you got a couple of weeks to get the application in. I think the application for transfer should be in by June sixteenth. And that would be, that would be the contingency date that I would put on it.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Well, if that's our meeting, do we want it by the, that Friday's the thirteenth, and so we've got...
Well, but the license expires on the sixteenth, I'd say.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, I would move that we extend the Bottle Shop license through June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, to expire if a ABCC license is not put in place by June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I change that? Can I, I don't mean to tell you a business, but I'm not gonna, the license won't be able to be in place.
No, sorry, Lynn corrected me, the application.
Okay, alright, because the license won't be, I mean, that's just not even...
No, no, I...
Yeah, okay, I just...
Yeah, so the application submitted by June thirteenth.
I'll second that, but I have a question, Josh, having, because you have experienced this. Is this motion give advantage to either the landlord or the tenant in this negotiation? Because that's not our intent, and we don't want to do that, but we do want to get, no, it was just the landlord now say, well, gee, now I can ask for a bazillion dollars because I know you won't agree to it, and that you're risking losing your liquor, you know, that, that's my concern.
I'll tell you who's putting the pressure on, the town willing to our build out. There's, if, yeah, this gives the landlord leverage. And I, that's what I was trying to hint at before. I don't want to do that, but we don't have a choice. If there was a million places to put this license, no problem. There's not many. But this is also, this would be a good tenant, I know that, I know it's a, the liquor license, the liquor business is lucrative. It would be good to have in that spot. So, does it give leverage? Yes, but I don't think we have much of a choice. And that's why I'm trying to be more generous on timing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, great, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Alright, next up is our road paving bond discussion. Lynn or Ian, did you want to speak to this?
Sure, just really quick, you know, granted that this is a law meeting. This is more just an informational piece to let the Select Board know where we stand currently with the bond sale. I wanted to mention that after our meeting on April seventh, DBW Director, myself spoke in detail as to what the original borrowing or the original sale contained. So when we went out to bid and we were awarded the four point seven million dollar project, that did not count for contingency and police detail. So, the town, Lynn, myself, we are working with our financial advisor in Troutman Pepper Locke in order to provide the information needed for the requirement letter for us to continue with the bond process. But we will be going forward with the full five point one million dollar bond. This is on the topic that we have the three hundred and fifty thousand allocated towards the debt service for this project. We will be lumping the HVAC chiller of nine hundred thousand into this bond sale in the, in the future. So this will make it more advantageous for us to go out for a sale. We are going to do this at the lowest cost for town. So I'm currently exploring options to do this over a short term, given the current interest rate market, as the rates are very volatile. So this is something that is currently in process. In terms of where we are today, this is, again, currently in process, and I have no action for you guys right now.
Okay. Andrew?
So, oh yeah, in the, within that second paragraph, I'm sorry, thank you, Lynn, I would just need the Select Board to rescind their original request to direct the Finance Director to take the four point seven million dollar bond. That is the only directive I would need today, the only action I would need today.
Okay, and you don't need us to go up to five point one tonight?
No, because when the town voted for the five point one million dollar borrowing at special town meeting, that was really all we needed to pursue this.
Okay, got it, thank you. Question, yeah, Andrew?
So I read this, and I was a little confused, and I spoke with Ian, just, just to be clear, Ian and I had a long conversation today about this. Because I felt that it was kind of rehashing a lot of what we had discussed last time. And my understanding where Ian maybe wasn't given the clear directive that I thought we had discussed. But after a long discussion, I don't think anybody here was saying, the bid is four point seven, so you can only have four point seven, and that's it. Everybody kind of agreed, you know, we need to make sure there's money for contingencies, we need to get five point one, but wouldn't it be better to borrow less if we could? And perhaps we can redirect the interest on the operational stabilization fund, since the police department project wasn't going to happen towards this project, and that could be literally set aside for this project, and we can borrow less, and obviously that'd be advantageous because we have less interest and it would cost the town less money.
Correct.
And in our conversation, it seemed that maybe that directive wasn't clear enough. Maybe if you heard from us that we, this year, maybe for the, you know, when the police department building is ready, next year the interest can go to that, this year the money can be used for this, would that not be better? And it has cost the town less money to take a lower, a lower, to borrow less money, basically?
If that was the direction that the Select Board wanted to take, yes, it would allow us to go out for a lesser borrowing.
I believe that's what, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, but I thought that's what we had basically decided last time.
So there's, there's some assumptions you're making in there, though. That four hundred thousand in interest, the article is to move it to capital stabilization. So then you need another vote at the fall town meeting. So we're making some assumptions that town meeting would pass that article.
Ian and I talked about that, too. Ian, you had an answer for that, though?
Yes, and when I explained it to you originally, Andrew, I wasn't a hundred percent sure, and I did check with Jason, as well as reached back out to our auditors. And although we can do a transfer from capital stabilization fund for debt service, we cannot do it for a project itself. It has to be allocated for it. So we would have to do a vote in order to take the funds out.
So the only obstacle that we're seeing to what we agreed to last time is that it would require another warrant to basically a two-thirds vote to move it for potential contingencies?
Well, it's not potential contingencies.
Definitely for the contingencies.
Yes, and we know that there's police detail costs that were not factored in to the bid that was submitted by the construction company. So, so we know we need more than four point seven.
Understood.
And, and really, in all, in all reality, we don't need the board to authorize the borrowing amount.
Right, because that's in the last one.
We brought it back to you because there was such a difference between what was authorized and what the bid came in at.
Right.
It's a good thing.
Which is good. I mean, I guess I feel like, and we all have the same goal, right? What's in the best interest of the town? And we understand that the town warrants at the last town meeting gave you, gave us, gave you the right to borrow five point one. In your judgment, do you not feel that it is worth the trouble of having a town meeting vote in the future to borrow four hundred thousand dollars less in the interest that that would accrue? Or do you think that, do you really think that we should just borrow five point one million and, you know?
Well, I don't know, just same troubles.
Well, the trouble is that the next, the uncertainty that the next town meeting might reject a two-thirds vote to put this money into the right place.
So, regardless, we would do the borrowing. We could, we're a little bit premature. The payment for the debt service is not due until, I think, what it'll be, April first or June first of next year. So we will have some time to figure out, is it going to be the four hundred, are we going to use the four hundred thousand to help pay that debt service, or I think you're saying, don't borrow that full amount, use the four hundred?
Why, yeah, why borrow an extra four hundred thousand dollars and pay the interest on that when you could keep the, you know, you could, we can wait, this money can be earmarked for that. It can only be for that, I mean, obviously, the vote notwithstanding. But it can actually be accruing interest itself while we're waiting to spend it, essentially. So, anyway, I felt that that's what we had all kind of decided last time. And I don't see anything here that's necessarily saying we can't do it still.
So...
If we have an invoice coming in in fall, things are going to be over the amount, and we don't have it borrowed, we can't be the vendor.
But you're not spending four point seven, I mean, and I'm, this doubles out for you here, but like, you're not going to spend four point, you're going to get a four point seven million dollar loan. You're not going to spend all of it at once, anyway.
It's going to be all spent by September, October, and then...
Oh, really?
Two hundred thousand beyond that already. So, we have a change order.
There's some money, where's the roads? Get the roads on ASAP.
So, so in between this bid coming out and the contract being executed, we already have a failed covert alongside the project, which I'm going to need the money for to fix right now along Long Meadow. The invoices for the police officers are probably going to be sixty to a hundred thousand dollars. And we also have no coverage for the irrigation damage that's going to likely to occur. So that contingency is necessary to keep those change orders and contracts signed and move the project forward. I do think that if there was money left over, you could always vote at another time, pivot it to something else.
Understood. Thank you, that was helpful. Okay, so, tonight, we just rescind the vote, right? Last, last meeting's vote, and then we should be set to go, okay?
Mark? Ian? I thought the vote we had for four point seven million dollars was based on bids that we got from, on bonds, correct?
No.
It was, so are you going to get bids, then?
Yes, yes, well, I based it on samples provided by Unibank, so when...
Those were samples, then?
Those were samples, those were not actual hard bids.
Okay, so, so the borrowing at five point one million dollars is going to be based on actual bids? Going to...
And Brian is, Brian is aware that the town has a three hundred and fifty thousand cap, and that will be built into the borrowing. So, our first year's debt service payment will reflect that three hundred and fifty thousand that was allocated originally.
I'm not necessarily opposed to this because I, I trust you guys are doing what you think is right, obviously, but I just want to make sure we remember last time, the, what's going to happen here is that, yes, we're saying, okay, we're going to pay three fifty for the debt service this time, but it's going to go up in future years, and that's going to hurt our capital budget. And I just want everyone to be clear that that's the consequence of what's going to happen. Josh made a great point, which basically was the same as what Mark's point was. Josh said, let's take a big hit and swing at this, let's put the four hundred thousand dollars in the first year so we can, like, not have to pay so much more in the futures. Then Mark said, why don't we just borrow less? And we all kind of agreed, but I just feel like we're having the same discussion again now. But I understand that you can, you know... I think that I, I'm not wedded in the idea, but I just personally think that if it's not that difficult to do, we can still get the five point one million by allocating the four hundred thousand towards this project, even though it might require a fall town meeting vote. But certainly, like, you know, it's not something, there's not a hill I'm going to die on or anything. I'm not going to be offended if we don't do that.
But when we had the four point seven discussion, we didn't know about these overages, right? We are, we were, we were at four point seven, now we know that there's money...
No, we knew, remember, Dan made a great point, said, we want to, Dan made a point, and he said, we want to make sure we get this done. And I think there was acknowledgement that, like, there's no way, there's no way where there's going to be contingencies that we're not going to pay for. The money's going to come from somewhere. And it was reassuring to you guys to say, hey, that four hundred thousand dollars is going to make sure we get there. And isn't it better to have money in, in our pocket now for this project rather than borrow four hundred thousand dollars more? Like, that's literally the conversation that we had.
Well, I know, we talked about the known unknowns. Now we, now they're known, no. We know what the contingency is, we know how much it is. I, I just think the timing is not going to work out. I totally, I see what you're saying. It always makes sense to borrow less if we can, and if we have the money. But I'm worried that the timing won't work out because this money is going to be spent before fall town meeting, and we don't want to be in a position where we can't.
Well, let me argue against myself, because I, I understand. I think that if the four hundred thousand dollars is not used for this, it can go into the capital planning, and then it can be used for the debt service in the future. I mean, that's kind of like the counter to what I'm trying to say, so...
How can, if it, if the four hundred thousand dollars is borrowed and not used, it's a very specific, kind of very specific use. You can't just put it in the...
I'm talking about the interest.
Oh, the interest from our capital stabilization fund, okay.
I mean, it can be used for debt service, which is, I mean, it could be accruing interest in the meantime, which can counterbalance the interest, the debt service that you're losing.
Okay. Alright, anything else on this one? Okay, so, you know, I think a lot of this is, we have to kind of latency on some of this stuff. So, but for right now, for tonight's action, I will, I move that, that we rescind the Select Board's vote from our April seventh meeting to direct the Finance Director to pursue the four point seven million dollar bond over a fifteen-year term.
Send the final.
It's five point one million.
No, we're rescinding that last...
Oh, rescinding the fourth one, okay.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Alright. Okay, so now moving into new business, we have the quarterly investment report. Is Erica with us?
She is, I'm going to move her in now.
Awesome. Hi, Erica, thank you for joining us.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to submit my quarterly report on the status of the town's cash investment for the period ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. As per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The bank's individual balances were under the twenty million dollar provision. All banks received the highest safety rating of green from Bear Bank, and all accounts are fully insured or secured. The third quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-five has been consistent with interest rates, and there have been no significant fluctuations. The Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer are closely monitoring interest rates and moving funds to the appropriate accounts that will optimize investments with the best return. Newberry Bank and Eastern Bank both experienced a change in Bear Bank ratings, returning from the yellow status back to green this quarter. As you know, they were yellow last quarter, but they're back to green. The OPEC Pension Reserve Investment Fund experienced a gain in quarterly interest. The quarter ended with a net increase of approximately ten thousand dollars, and the March thirty-first balance is approximately eight point six million dollars. Also noteworthy, during the third quarter, the town earned a total of four hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and one cent in interest. The Treasurer's Office continues to seek the best possible interest rates and diversify funds appropriately to maximize investment potential while being in compliance with Massachusetts state laws and regulations. We will also continue to monitor all accounts to ensure that they are safe and secure.
Great, thank you so much, Erica. Any questions for Erica? Alright, well, this one was easy.
I like this one.
Yeah, well, we made you wait long enough, though.
That's alright.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
No problem, have a great night.
Great, thank you, alright. Next up on our agenda, we have a request from Fletcher's to extend their opening hours on Mother's Day in, in terms of their liquor license. And they, what they're requesting is, you know, within the, the, the limits that, you know, that they can be in. So, any comments, questions about this one?
Will we extend the Fletcher's liquor license hours to ten AM on Sunday, May eleventh?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, Mark, do you have something on this?
I guess my, my question was, are there, what are the prospects of there being others that'll come now and ask? Although Mother's Day is...
Sunday.
Yeah, the requests are obviously at the liberty of the boards.
Yeah, the requests are obviously at the liberty of the board's meeting schedule. So if people were to come between now and then, we wouldn't be able to grant them.
Right.
They've got the request before the meeting.
So the alternative is, is this something we should offer to, as a competitive position to some of the other restaurants in town? Or does it, Josh, or does it have to be in, in response to a request?
It's, oh, can we offer it? I don't, informationally, we could. I don't see any reason not.
Maybe my word should be, can we authorize it for other, other restaurants in town?
So you actually can. So liquor licenses cannot be barred between selling alcohol between certain periods of time. But you could authorize early extending and late extending hours as you, as you see fit. I believe that's well within your realm. I can look into that further.
To individual licenses or across the board?
I think, as the licensing authority, I think across the board.
Really?
But let me.
Because the license itself has hours.
It does, correct. But the ABCC guidelines constitutes the early, early extension hours and late extension hours. But I'm not confident enough to like say that with full fact. Whereas it may come up based on a temporary extension request like we have seen in the past.
I'm just, Mark, I was surprised to hear you answer because I know, I just remember last time this came up, we had a backup board, I think it was, the board was a different makeup. But, and there was a lot of question of whether we want to do this at all. It was either meeting house or.
But I thought it was a much broader than just a one-day, Mother's Day, wasn't it?
It was. Oh, yeah.
It was a much broader, and this is a one-day, Mother's Day, people run out to breakfast, brunch, whatever. That's, that's my only thought is that, you know, somebody hears about this tomorrow and says, hey, how about us? And, and.
Yeah.
That's like an extra credit for watching select meetings.
I don't know, I don't know if we can. I'd be surprised if we can do it across the board. But I, I think, Mike, if you could look into that for us.
Yeah.
I don't feel the need to do it for Sunday, especially if businesses now, they, I, this seems like there's been a lot of planning going into it. I don't know if everyone else says, oh, I can open an hour early on Sunday if it'll matter. But if you want to move, I mean, I would support it if you want to make a motion.
Look, you know, and I'm not going to name names, but there are currently places who sell light liquor that aren't opening at 10 o'clock on Mother's Day. There may be some others that might. And I just, gee, I never thought of it, you know, from a competitive position, why can't we do that as well? That's, that's my only point. I mean, I'd like to extend this to other organs, other, you know, facility, you know, establishments that would like to do it that day as well.
I'm not, I'm not against it, I just think.
It's two hours, right?
Well, yeah, probably one, what is it, like on Sunday?
Theirs is actually noon.
I think it's two hours.
I'm not, I don't feel strongly either way. I, I just think maybe a better way to do it would be to, every year when we have, we could say, just so you know, you can do this if you want.
I think there's an MGL you can adopt, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
For across the board. But until I find that.
Yeah.
If you want to table it till the end of the meeting, we could come back to it. But if not, just.
I mean, I'm not wedded in this.
Yeah. I think it's interesting, something we could look into. And I think maybe for right now, we vote on Fletcher's.
Hey, they were the ones who asked.
Something that we could look into further and maybe implement in the future.
All right, there's a motion on that one.
Second.
Yep, and, and so anything else, any further discussion? Yep, all right, all those in favor? Great, all right.
200 pages left.
All right, we've got the utility bill insert request, two of them. I don't know if anyone's here to speak to them or we can just kind of vote on them. No one's got, okay, thank you, Lisa.
So it's two inserts. One is a third of a sheet to just notify residents that the annual water quality report is available online. It's just a mast D E P requirement to either send it out or tell them where to see it. And then the second one is a third of a sheet, two-sided, for the recycled carts. The recycling partnership just wants you to keep making sure residents know that they're coming so that when they land on their lawn, they don't say, what is this?
So. Great, thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve both these inserts.
Wait, can I, would you have that up? Second. I made a note that I wanted to say one thing about this, but I'm trying to, I'm sorry. There was something about, do you have that up?
Yeah, I got them here.
I'm so sorry.
I got them here.
But, oh, is this, is this thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the one thing that I would suggest before you send it out is this thing where you say to sign up. Because the default is that they're going to get it, right? Even if they do nothing. So I was worried that people would get this and say, oh, well, I've got to go do this. And so maybe just eliminate to sign up.
Okay.
And keep it to learn more.
Yep, okay.
Great, okay. Mark, were you able to make the motion or were you in the middle of it?
No, I, I made the motion.
Second, okay. Second, okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Great.
Oh, that website actually does have all the dimensions of the carts.
I was thinking the same thing, like backing up, you know, and your, well, yours is in your shed, right?
All right, we'll move into the street closure application for the Long Meadow Street, East of the Green.
Will we approve the street closure for East of the Green for June 1st from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Great. Next up, we have the construction manager at-risk vote for the middle school building project. Lynn, did you want to explain that one?
Yeah, sure, happy to. So this is just a standard form that has to be completed by our town council. And in reviewing the town meeting vote, the language in the vote did not go so far as to be as explicit as CM at risk. It needs to be authorized by the governing body, of which the select board is the governing body, according to MGL. So this is just a, really an administrative vote so that town council can sign this form to send it into the inspector general.
Great, thank you. Josh?
And I don't know if everyone got the chance to talk to Lynn about this, everyone on board, I mean. But the middle school building committee has chosen a construction manager at risk, which is a, basically a form of contracting. It's somebody who acts as, would you say a general contractor? Yeah, it's a, it's a super general contractor for the middle school building project. It is a choice that is, there's a slightly higher fee. But the idea is that we can, especially with talk of tariffs, they, we, they move much faster and they become part of the design team much earlier. And so the idea is that they can start ordering things that they know are going to go up in price that can save us in the long run. And also, I think from the middle school building committee, the biggest, at least driver for me, and we talked about a lot, they, because they get in earlier, it moves up our timetable and allows us, if everything goes well, to hit that 2028 opening, which is really the, the goal here. And so we can, and make a much smoother transition. So just in case anyone watching or you folks are wondering why we're doing the CM at risk, that's why.
Great, yeah, thank you for that explanation. Mark?
Yeah, Josh, has the, has this middle school building committee considered the clerk of the works? And when we did, certainly the, the DPW project, we had a construction manager at risk. But we found that clerk of the works, who had a whole different set of, and I'm not putting this in front of the motion, but who had a whole different set of obligations and job requirements, was very much beneficial to the town to have. And just, I just want to throw that out because this kind of reminded me of that when you guys next talk. I, it, I know we spent that money out of our money, but, but it was well worth the cost. Lynn, were you here at the time?
Yeah, we didn't do a CM at risk for the DPW, but we did have a clerk of the works. That was part, part-time there and part-time at the adult center.
Right, right.
Definitely well worth the money.
I, I know we've talked about it, I don't remember.
We're just not there yet.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you might not be there, but talk about it again, I guess.
No, we definitely, it's come up just preliminarily. Yeah, and I, it, from projects I've worked on in legal capacity, yeah, it does really, especially for something where we need to have, we have a pretty tight deadline that we want to hit, it's a good idea.
Great, so there's no like specific language, right, to read?
Uh, there is.
Oh, geez, there's specific language.
On the authorization.
In the memo, I believe that the, the last paragraph, it's.
In the memo?
Yeah, I think there's specific language for vote, but I, the other attachment, I believe, is a town council certification. I don't know that's the one we have to recite, if I'm misspeaking, Lynn, correctly.
So I guess I move that we authorize the town to proceed with the contract with an at-risk construction firm? Do you think that's enough?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, great. Okay, and then also, Lynn, if you wanted to explain this next one too, the intergovernmental agreement for the.
Thank you. So this is also just a standard agreement. But recently, with the intergovernmental agreements that we've had come up, they actually need select board approval, the intergovernmental ones. And so this is for the lease of the tri-town trolley van through East Long Meadow and Hampden. In order for me to sign it, I need your authorization.
Great, we, we just went through this with fiber spring, let's say.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I will move that we direct the town manager to sign the intergovernmental agreement for a vehicle lease between the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority and the towns of Hampden, East Long Meadow and Long Meadow.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay, great. And next up, we have a proclamation for ALS Awareness Month. This has come before the board a couple of times, or come to select board members a couple of times in the past couple of years. But I think just because of the timing of when it was sent, it was never, I think, brought up at, or one of our meetings to be voted on. But this is something that is, I think, you know, Dan received an email about it. I received an email about it as well. And Dan was the one that kind of really queued it up and brought it to my attention. And, you know, we were able to connect with some of the, the residents that made this request and, you know, the importance of us recognizing this in Long Meadow. So hopefully, folks have a chance to take a look at it. And I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions before we take a vote on it. Josh?
I just think Mona Swanson for bringing it to our attention. She thought this is a good thing for the town to do. It's an honor of her father who passed away from ALS. So it's a very nice thing that we can do, I think.
Great, thank you.
Second.
We have no motion. So I move that the town of Long Meadow, I guess, approve this proclamation of May 2025 to be ALS Awareness Month.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, so next up, we have on our agenda, setting our special town meeting and election date for the debt exclusion vote for our middle school building project. And what the proposed dates are, are September 9th for a special town meeting for the debt exclusion vote. And then a actual ballot vote to take place on September 30th. And, and, and I don't know if you all want to speak to the timing of this and why this needs to be then.
Isn't the meeting for the, the town meeting for bonding?
I'm sorry, the, the September 9th one is, yes, the bond authorization.
Oh, it was just, I must have just been typing when I typed it over.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the debt exclusion vote should be for the.
Oh, it just says debt exclusion.
They both say debt exclusion.
Yeah.
Yes, so we looked at many options. I brought a couple scenarios to the middle school building committee. We discussed them and this was the recommended schedule. We have worked around holidays, school vacations, professional development days, other potential elections, and fall town meeting later on, our traditional fall town meeting later on, which we could have done, except we gained considerable amount of design time, which seems crazy, but actually allows us to meet that fall 2028 deadline if we schedule the vote in September.
Thank you. Anything else on this one?
No, they, they both have to happen. It didn't really matter the order. But we thought that this one makes a lot of sense because town meetings are a bit cheaper to hold, right? So if this failed the town meeting, then we could cancel the election.
Yeah.
And this is the same process that was in place for the middle school, I'm sorry, the high school town meeting and then the election.
Okay.
Can you just remind me, Josh, what is it the middle school building committee needs to do in advance of the September 9th town meeting vote?
I think, what, what do you mean?
I mean, the, does anything, I mean, we could have the vote, you know, anytime the, we've got an amount of bond to approve.
Well, oh, well, they're working on getting the right number.
Right. Because my follow-up question is, you know, with this deadline, is this going to be something that we're comfortable with setting this as the deadline and not saying, gee, we're going to be a week later, we're not going to.
No, I think as of a couple months, weeks ago.
Yeah, the schematic design was submitted to MSBA May 1st. That was the deadline, the last deliverable. The MSBA board meets on June 15th, I believe it is, where they'll actually vote on our schematic design submission. And then once we get to that point, we just wait until the funding authorization by the community. And so one of the other reasons why it's important to set this date tonight is that our architect has a pamphlet, for those of you that attended the Williams Middle School walkthrough with the different tables showing the different phases of the project. They, the pamphlet gave a vague, you know, fall vote date. They're going to finalize that if you vote on this tonight. And they will have that pamphlet available next week's, at next week's annual town meeting to get people prepared that in September, there's going to be two big votes on this.
Mark, I don't have it in front of me, but we, the number is, was submitted. We, the middle school building committee voted on it, and voted on the submission at our last meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not going to say in September 8th, gee, we need another three days.
No, no, no. Yeah, this was, this was always, the timeline was always shooting for this.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to set the special town meeting for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? And then I move to set the special town election for the debt exclusion vote for the middle school building project funding for Tuesday, September 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll, I'll edit the agenda retro to change that typo so that it's clear if you look back that it's a borrowed option.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then we also need to set our fall special town meeting date. And the, the date that's being proposed is Tuesday, November 4th. This is the date that is going to be election day in most municipalities. In our town, we don't have any elections that day. And so this is the same thing that I think we did maybe two years ago. And it kind of worked out well. It felt like an election day, people were kind of primed to vote and participate civically. So because that kind of worked well, we thought it would be good to do this, do this on November 4th as well. And also, it kind of gives us some space from the other, you know, special town meeting on September 9th. Rather than doing this fall special town meeting sometime in October, it just gives us more, more time in between meetings. Okay, so I will move that we set the fall special town meeting for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, great. Correspondence, any comments or anything on correspondence?
I just, I was just going to comment also on Gateway Fiber letter, only the timing. I think it's unfortunate that it's a, you know, it's a letter that was apparently sent on a certain date in, in March, but we got it here in, in May. And I think that if it's addressed to the whole select board, we have emails, we ought to be able to get these things out more quickly.
Yeah, so I, I'll talk about the Gateway Fiber letter, especially since we had two resident comments on it. So, you know, I think seeing this letter without context, I can totally understand how, you know, folks can get confused by what this letter is saying and, you know, what this process is, especially since, you know, most folks aren't familiar with the process for, you know, fiber internet to, a fiber internet company to go into a town. So in the state of Massachusetts, a private company cannot attach to poles or run wires underground in a municipality without first getting a public hearing and an approval from the select board or that municipality's equivalent. So here, Gateway Fiber, they were not even aware, actually, of this law. And the town manager, with, you know, the help of town council, we provided them with information on how to initiate this public hearing. They have all the information to initiate the public hearing and they have not done that yet. So, you know, when we're talking about. So, you know, when we're talking about investments being made here or anything being done here, they have not even gotten to the first step. And so it is, the ball's complete, and they're court, they can initiate a public hearing. Once they, once they do so, we will have a public hearing. You know, I think some comments were also made about the task force and the task force's thoughts about Gateway Fiber. You know, I think that those comments are probably better, you know, reserved for when there is a public hearing, and I can speak more into what the task force assessment was of them. But, you know, so, so I'll kind of set that to the side. And then a couple of other things in the letter that I think were kind of confusing maybe to folks because some of the attachments they talk about sound similar to what we funded at our fall special town meeting, but in fact are not what we funded in our fall special town meeting. So, for example, the first item is a poll license agreement. So that is much different than what we funded, which were poll applications. The poll license agreement is just a blanket general agreement that they signed with poll owners that covers the entire state of Massachusetts, that just gives them the ability to submit a poll application. So that is very different than what we funded, which is actually submitting a poll application for every single poll in the town, which costs money, right? This doesn't cost anything, this is just an agreement that they signed. And then also, you know, something like their high-level design, and I think that we are providing the attachments. This was kind of confusing because this was a letter that was addressed to the entire select board, was sent by mail without the attachments, and so that was uploaded onto the agenda, but the attachments were then emailed to, I think, just myself and Lynn. But of course, we'll, yeah, I think, I think Lynn's probably already provided those attachments to folks that have asked for them, and we can publish them in our next agenda, or, or however we want. But even something like the high-level design is very different than the design and engineering that we funded. So the high-level design that they provided was a map of our town, and the, the map is just, it's incorrect. There are areas of town that show polls, but those areas actually have underground lines, and it really looks like something else kind of just slapped together to just submit. So that is very different than what we do in what the normal process is when, you know, like, for example, this winter, Fiber Spring walked a hundred miles, went to every single poll, you know, measured it, assessed it, documented it, and, you know, that is what we paid them to do. This was, this was not anything close to that. So, you know, we are not aware of any investments that they have made in this process, and they have not even, like, initiated the process to even begin the conversation to come into, into town. And, you know, this is something that we have seen in municipalities all over Western Mass that have been moving towards municipal fiber, are some of these private companies that kind of come in and try to tap into that enthusiasm for fiber, just to see if they can kind of get people to, you know, change their mind, or, you know, maybe if some folks get cold feet. So this kind of, like, aggressive talk is not something that's, you know, uncommon. We've seen this all throughout Western Mass, so, yeah, so, you know, this is just, it's on Gateway Fiber to initiate the public hearing. I think if they ask for it, I think we're mandated by law to have a public hearing, so, you know, we're, we're just waiting, waiting for them to do that.
Thank you for that, that's, I think, very helpful. Just, and it sounds like these people may not, may or may not be actually serious about actually following through with this, but am I, just from my education, do we get to choose whether they're allowed to do this?
Yes.
So therefore, if it's in the town interest, could you see a situation, let's say they get serious and they get, look like they're reputable in doing it? Two questions, would it be in our interest to deny that, to prevent competition for the one we really want to succeed, which will benefit our town? Or is it even possible that somehow they just turn it all around and they're great, that we somehow benefit from them doing it instead of us?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, a conversation, you know, that, that we can have, especially, I think, if they initiate a public hearing. I will say that in all the research that we did, there were, no other private company actually went through the step of having a public hearing once they saw that the town was supportive of municipal fiber. Because, you know, there is something that is very kind of odd about this approach, that most of the folks, you know, in the space and the area are very kind of scratching their heads about, is that to kind of come in, in this adversarial way, the, where you're trying to kind of thwart the will of the people of the town, is just, doesn't seem like good business sense, or a good way to build a business reputation. So this is kind of uncharted territory for us. Most other towns have just kind of said, you know, go away, and these other companies have just gone away. And so the fact that, you know, that they, they are hinting that they want to do this or something, you know, I'm not exactly sure. And then, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if, when we get to the public hearing, I can kind of talk more about the seriousness of maybe their proposal. You know, one thing they had communicated to us was that they were build, interested in building out in sections, in sections in the northern part of town, and would maybe consider the rest of the town, would not, were not really interested in doing any of the underground areas. And so, you know, I, there are reasons why I think they would be interested in doing that, and it's not necessarily to provide fiber to Long Meadow, but maybe to just connect fiber loops from Springfield to other communities. But, you know, that, that's what a public hearing is for, if they want to come. But that's, those are some of the, you know, I just, I guess, a sample of the major red flags that we, we saw from, you know, having any kind of communication with them, yeah.
Thanks, the only thing I would add to their request for a public hearing, it needs to be accompanied by the correct poll petition paperwork and a butters notices, so that has been what's missing. I followed back up with them from that April eleventh letter, letting them know that I don't actually have enough information to bring it forward to you for a public hearing. There are required butters notifications if it's a new poll, and it's impossible for me to tell from that plan what is new, what is existing, and, and what exactly it is that they're laying out. So they can request a public hearing, but the documentation needs to be submitted in order for you to actually have a valuable public hearing process.
Thanks. So just so we're clear, the, the town did nothing, nothing wrong in this situation that was brought up?
I guess it depends on who you ask.
There could have been more refreshments here tonight.
So that's kind of, that's kind of my point, I just wanted to bring that up because, like, this, this was supported by so many people in town, went through all the process, we need, has done an excellent job doing this. And it's, it really comes down to the same few people that are, just want to attack beneath, want to attack progress in town. And unfortunately, it's, that's kind of the role we're in, we take all these shots all the time, but it's the same people talking to themselves, talking to each other. You're making positive change in our community, and people want to create misinformation, create some conspiracy theory. We see this at the national level, and it has no place in our town. We've done everything the right way, Beneath, you've done everything the right way. And, you know, it's the same few people that just want to cause issues, question things, conspiracy theory has no place in the town of Long Meadow. So, thank you, Beneath.
Yeah, I gotta respond to that only because the letter came out this way, and it appears to me, and I think appears to some of the people who commented tonight, that somebody, somewhere, somehow knew about this, but this is the first public notification. Like I said, my concern is, this letter is dated March, and here it is May that we got it. And I'm not saying anything was done wrong, and Beneath, your explanation was perfect and ideal, it makes a lot of sense. I've had emails back and forth with Lynn about it, it all makes a lot of sense. But I think when the emails addressed to the select board, it needs to go to the select board and not just the chair. And I recognize, only you got the attachments, that's fine. But, and, and frankly, this isn't the first time this has happened on letters that have come, they just sit and sit and sit, and they wait for our next, our next meeting. And then people call me, did you get the letter I sent, did you get, you know, where'd you send it, I sent it to the select board. So I think, my, my only point is, you know, the more transparent we are, the more things we get out to everybody, the less people believe they're caught off guard. I don't know that they were, but I think they believe they were.
Yeah, and I think the March twenty-seventh letter is dated that, but we haven't received it.
We didn't get it until mid-April.
Yeah, until mid-April, so this was the first meeting since we've gotten the letter, that we could attach it to the agenda, so. And again, I mean, I think the, the letter itself, it, the dates on it throughout the letter are incorrect, about even when Lynn's emails are, and, and all of that, so. Yeah, I'm not sure why they dated it at March twenty-seventh, we just got it, I think, two weeks ago, Josh?
For anyone who's got it out, this long term meeting, I just wanted to point out that I stole a article from the Globe behind the paywall about Milton, that just, the override was almost ten million dollars, I think. And Milton's a very wealthy town, and, but school, the school budget, that the inexorable rise of costs has caught up to them, like, it's caught up to a lot of towns, and I, if you read it, I think it's a great lesson on what, what can happen and how this town really works hard to keep even services, which is a struggle. And, you know, it may not always be that way, we may have to do an override at some point, but the fact that we haven't to date, it really shows how hard our, our schools and Lynn and Ian and the whole team work on keeping us within our bounds without having to ask people to pay an extra ten million dollars. So I would encourage people to read that article, it's very enlightening.
Great, thank you, anything else? All right, all right, I move that with your turn.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, great, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.